Good evening, everybody. Calling to order the February sixth meeting of the Newton School Committee. Hello to everyone in the school committee chamber and to everyone joining us from home. In a moment, we'll dive right into our posted agenda. Our meeting is very full, but I do want to take a moment to, at the outset of our meeting, to congratulate the three candidates who've been selected as finalists in the search to hire Newton's next superintendent. Alphabetically, they are Thomas Anderson, Superintendent of New Bedford Public Schools, Peter Light, Superintendent of Acton Boxborough Regional School District, and Anna Nolan, Superintendent of Newton Public or Natick Public Schools, apologies. So we are extremely excited to be moving forward with these three finalists, and we will talk more about that shortly later in the meeting. But up first, we have a period reserved for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the school committee and for the committee to hear directly of your concerns and your perspective. We do not respond in this context, but we listen and seriously take your feedback. Each of us is also available by phone or email if anyone wishes to schedule a conversation. We have a couple of people signed up to speak, and when called, you'll be able to unmute, state your name and address, and take up to three minutes to share your concerns with the committee. Vice Chair Kathy Shields will give you a thirty second verbal warning before your time expires. Our two public commentators are Christina Kobasas and Valerie Piri. Apologies for any errors in pronouncing your names. Christina, you should be able to unmute, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Christina Kobas, eighty Fuller Street, Waban. Thank you for having us this afternoon, this evening. On Saturday, I attended the final performance of Matilda Junior at Oak Hill Middle School. The cast and crew performed an incredible show. The production was run by the students. They created the costumes, the props, the sets. They ran lighting and sound. They were the stage crew in addition to being the performers in the show. These eighty children were guided and supported by four fantastic teachers, Mr. Cutler, Mr. Bueno, Ms. Colella, and Ms. Shains. I could go on and on about the performance and the valuable experiences these students had along the way. However, the most amazing moment came after the final bows. Eighth grade students came to the stage, and for five minutes, they took turns speaking about their experiences in theater at Oak Hill over the past three years. Using words like extraordinary, incredible, fantastic, and grateful, each student spoke passionately about the impact the arts program had on their middle school experience. There are few activities in life that are truly and fully inclusive, a place where everyone can experience being a part of a team, working towards a goal, and sharing the success. Whether it is choir, band, orchestra, or theater, the experience of preparing for a performance together builds a bond that becomes a core memory. These students will always be bound together as their own Matilda Junior community. Please consider this when determining the future of our students' exposure to the arts. At Oak Hill on Saturday, the expansive and deep impact of the performing arts on our students was on full display, and it made me incredibly proud to be a Newtonian. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Christina. Up next, we have Valerie Piri.
Hello.
Hi Valerie, please state your name and address, and you have up to three minutes.
My name is Valerie Piri, fifty-eight Adella Ave in West Newton. I have two daughters who attend day middle school, one in sixth grade and one in eighth. They are both active in the school chorus led by Dr. Smith, as well as drama led by Ms. McGetrick that offered that in school. Their ages are fourteen and twelve, and we, as parents, have been having a harder and harder time finding activities that my daughters both show passion or high interest in, especially post pandemic. The isolation of the pandemic was quite tough on their social emotional needs. Chorus and drama are the only two classes and activities that I hear about on a daily basis. It's not just about what they are learning, but it's who they're learning these creative endeavors with, their peers. They don't light up when they talk about their math classes, but when they mention chorus, I can see it fulfilling the social emotional need that they had been lacking during the pandemic. Dr. Smith and Ms. McGetrick enabled these kids to put forward the confidence that they need. It's pretty amazing, actually, not just, not just in a social way, but in a way to move out of their comfort zones as they develop into young adults. I see them doing this by volunteering and trying out for outside activities beyond just the school classes. They try out for things such as all city tribadors, musical theater, or being even just being a brand new stage crew member at a musical theater show, venturing into something that they've never done before. It seems to definitely satisfy a sense of self and allows them to grow and mature. And this is all due to our amazing Newton Schools music, drama, and arts program. It would be a huge detriment to the students and their futures to no longer offer anything like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie, and thanks to both of our speakers tonight. We very much appreciate. Yes.
I happened to check my email. Wait, when I came in, there was another request for public comment.
Christensen. What time did that request come in? Okay, Stephen, do you, do you see? John, John Christensen? Thanks, Chris. Go ahead, John, you should be able to unmute and please state your name and your address and speak up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is John Christensen. I'm at thirty-five Melville Avenue in Newtonville. I'm also a parent of a student involved in the FA Day music programs, the musical and the chorus, and share the same concerns and celebrations that were just shared by the other presenters. So I thank you all for taking the time to listen to us. I can keep my comments brief. In the last three years, I have an eighth grader. My son has found a home in music programs at, at day, really because Ms. McGetrick and Dr. Smith, and also my son isn't in orchestra, but Sean Brown have created an environment that is very naturally, very naturally fosters inclusivity and support at a time when our kids, especially coming out of altered learning environments and, and support systems of COVID, is they really needed. The thing that I think that the music programs underscore that while these are achieved in other areas of our curricula and school activities is they teach our children a vocabulary for empathy, a vocabulary for compassion. They teach our children about how to be involved in composition and interaction and cooperation that has acute input or acute effect on their, their well-being now as an outlet for the things that they might otherwise only express, express in these very generic condensed forms of communication that they've gotten used to, LOL, TBH, BRB. Music and drama allow them to express themselves with their full bodies. It is an active form of learning. It naturally brings in people with different abilities and backgrounds. This is very obvious when we attend the concerts and performances, that these are inclusive programs that represent really the best of what our, our, our school system is trying to achieve. And that students that participate are, have a positive influence that ripples away from it. They're the ones who stand up in support of minoritized students in our community. They're leading the way because they see the value of being included for who they are. And I see that as an intangible aspect of this contribution of music programs to our community and hope you continue to support them even though there are difficult decisions ahead. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, John, appreciate it. We also appreciate everyone who spoke. Our public comment period is now closed. Thanks, Chris, for flagging that for my attention that we had an additional requestor. All right, so we'll turn now to our interim superintendent update.
Thank you, Tamika. I'm going to try to be brief this evening as I know we have quite a large agenda. So I want to start by talking about connecting with the Newton community. Many of these events have been due to an opportunity through our PTOs, which is something I believe Dr. Fleishman started with the school committee a number of years ago, where you get out into the schools hosted by the principals at each of our schools and having an opportunity to talk about what is happening in the schools, what might be some concerns. Right now, obviously, we are trying to share information on a much wider basis with members of our school community and beyond with the override, you know, happening again on March fourteenth and critical in it to the operation of the school district. So I say that, and we have been so far to, I want to say by the end of this week, fifteen of the schools. So we have another six. They are on the agenda to make sure that we're out there. I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank school committee members. I want to thank my team who are out there with me, stand by my side, being new to the district and having an opportunity, as I said, to, to answer questions, to have very, to me, effective dialogue. And I say this because sometimes there are twenty people, sometimes there are ten people. You know, we would like there to be fifty and sixty people, you know, to be able to, again, have these deep conversations back and forth. I have asked people that if you're in attendance to share beyond information so people can make an informed choice about, again, this critical opportunity for supporting our schools. So again, thank you to the schools, thank you for hosting, thank you to the PTOs for getting our members out there, and we will continue to do that. Yesterday, I had the opportunity, along with the mayor and her team, to go to the Newton Chinese Language School hosted by Principal Chu. Also, we had moderators, community members. We probably had between, I want to ask, ping twenty-five and thirty participants. It was, we were very welcomed, again, opportunity to answer questions, to have dialogue, and to always bring the focus back to our students and the impact, again, on our students district-wide. We've also had a virtual city meeting. I think it was on the twenty-sixth of December. We had over ninety participants, and that, again, is on every aspect of not only the debt exclusions, but the operating override. And we've had write-ups, I've spoken to, and I hope I have this right, Fig City News with Bruce Henderson, the Newton Beacon with Dan Atkinson, WBUR with Samuel Petraselli. Tomorrow, I believe we're going to be virtual, but with the chamber, having an opportunity again to, to speak and to share information, to answer questions. And then I want to end, and you can see how busy we have all been. I want to share that finally, we are prepared on Wednesday at Newton North High School. I believe it's at seven PM, and this will be an in-person opportunity for the public, no matter what school you go to, whether you're a community member, to really join us and really have this, this dialogue back and forth. So again, I will say it so that people can make informed choices. I also want to mention to everybody on another note that I attended the Midwinter Meaning of the Mass Association for School Superintendents, and it was critical, and it was talking about leadership during challenging times. And again, focusing on supporting our students, supporting our staff, and supporting our school community. So as it, as everyone must feel this way, whenever you are among people who are dealing with some of the same challenges that you are dealing with, there's strength in numbers. And to be able to share and to talk about, you know, how we continue to lead and to move our community, and most importantly, our students. And when I hear, again, parents on this evening, you know, talking about what a struggle it is, even socially, and opportunities for kids. So all of this is part of us moving forward, and I know I've been here just a short while, but I'm always so proud, and I talk about the opportunities that you continue to provide, open the doors, extracurricular, athletics, fine arts, some of that you'll hear tonight, support for our students. So I'm always very proud of the work that is happening here. I also have to talk about the extreme cold of Friday and Saturday. I want to thank Dave Stickney, Liam Hurley, our custodians, our facility staff. We sent out, of course, I know to school committee, we performed building checks throughout the weekend to make sure our facilities were not impacted, and if they were, that we were able to respond in a timely manner. I know we had a sprinkler pipe break with no water discharge at Newton South. We had a Univent coil break at Newton South, and also a power supply in the tell data closet impacted by the heavy steam from the Univent coil burst, and that was replaced today. And I think we also had low pressure, low gas pressure at Cabot and two steam links at Franklin. So when you have over twenty-three, twenty-four buildings, you know, I think, I think we did okay. And I do have to say, we did have our little enclosure right outside here at our central office impacted a little bit. So I think I want to end with that back last Friday, I attended, and I have so enjoyed being part of Metco. They bring superintendents together, they bring leaders together, there's professional development, again, opportunities to share, and they do such an excellent job. So you're going to see a picture up there, but before you see that, I want to thank Lisa Gilbert-Smith and the generosity of the Kraft family that had us at Gillette. We talked about launching anti-racism roadmap. We talked about development of a three-year strategic plan for Metco headquarters on how best to support our students and our families, funding models, expansion opportunities. I love the state legislative advocacy requests, so here's my fun. So I'm there, I get there a little bit late because we had a meeting at a Brown school that I think, I think it was about two and a half hours, that particular Friday morning. And when I get there, I miss part of the meeting, but they start lunch and they get everybody excited. And they say that there's a possibility that the Super Bowl rings are going to be present for those Patriots fans, and we could take pictures. I'm not sure I was all that impressed, but anyway, all of a sudden, they say, oh, sorry, Super Bowl rings are someplace else, you know, around the country. And instead, you're going to get an opportunity to speak to Matthew Slater, who is a captain on the Patriots team. So here's my story. I don't usually act this way, but I will tell you that after Matthew spoke, and he spoke with such passion, and I've been in his presence, and I will speak to that, where he talked about, and we were talking about busing fifty years ago. We were looking at the history of Metco, the brave people that started this program. I know you were one of the first, and he talked about his parents. And I quickly realized that my daughters are his age. So his parents, who experienced busing, an opportunity, educational opportunity. And they opened it up for questions, and I will tell all of you that back in April of twenty nineteen, I was at the State House, and I was one of four superintendents who were speaking to the state legislature and the education committee about the Student Opportunity Act. You had three minutes to speak, and all of a sudden, and we waited our turn, I mean, it was a packed house, and all of a sudden, four gentlemen walked in, dressed very handsome gentlemen. It was Matthew Slater, Doron Harmon, for these football fans, and Jason and Devin McCordy, the brothers. And they came in, and when I tell you how they spoke about equity and funding for all of our students to make sure they had these educational opportunities, he was my hero. They were from then on. So I had an opportunity to get up and to speak to him, and he welcomed me in. You see, I got to take my picture with Matthew Slater. I loved, and Matthew, I have to tell you, if you're listening, I was so surprised when he is in front of sixty or seventy thousand people each week during football games, and he talked about how nervous he was that day speaking in front of the state legislature. So I told him that it was passed, and he knew in September of twenty nineteen. The rest is history, so I had so much fun. So I just wanted to share a little bit of levity with the group, and that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Kathy. It is a wonderful story and a lovely picture. I'm happy for you. Any questions for Kathy about something shared in the update? No? Okay, all right, so we will move right along to our consent agenda. We have three items up for consent today. They are the McKinney Vento reimbursement approval, out-of-state field trips approval, and approval of the September seventh, twenty twenty-two minutes. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing nothing, would, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? I see Cove.
I moved to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
You're so close, so.
Go ahead, Emily. Is that a second from Emily? Thank you. So we've got a motion and a second. We'll now take a roll call vote by Ward, Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four is a yes. Ward five?
Yes, I'm so glad, up close, Washington is being restarted.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda has passed unanimously. We will now continue to our updates and discussion, and up next, that is the superintendent search update. And here, Stephen's got a little bit of juggling because, are there any members of the search committee that? I know, I know, sorry about that. All right, let's see if he can pull in the search committee members who might attend tonight. And yes, the presentation would be great, although I'm trying to find it on my end. All right, well, I don't have my, it's gone. Oh, well, all right, I will wing it. Do you have any members of the search committee that are there? Okay, good. So, yep, no worries. Let me get started with the, the presentation. So on the first page here, on the first slide, something to note is that the finalists have been announced, as we've, we spoke about earlier. We have three finalist candidates that were announced in a district-wide communication today. They are, they are Peter Light, current superintendent of Acton Boxborough, Anna Nolan, current superintendent of Natick, and Thomas Anderson, current superintendent of New Bedford. So returning to the second slide, or slide number three, next slide, please. Here, something to note here is that our next steps include a background check of the finalists that will be ongoing from now until next week. It's a process that should take about a week to complete. We will be developing interview questions with the school committee. And here, I'd like to remind our school committee members to submit your questions to our HYA consultants. That will be tomorrow, we'll be meeting to develop questions as a group. That's a publicly noted meeting, and we'll be meeting in person here tomorrow afternoon. Our finalist interviews will occur the week of February thirteenth. I'll talk about, more about that on the next slide. And our selection and approval of the superintendent will occur in the morning of February seventeenth. Next slide. So here, I think what I'd like to draw attention to is that we have a full day of scheduled, scheduled events for each finalist candidate. They will be visiting Newton, and we will have tours of several school buildings. I think three is the current number that we're, we're targeting. We'll have in-person staff meet and greets for all of our staff. We'll have a virtual community forum that is to give the most access to the most people in our community and also to be able to have a really lengthy time in which to do that, or good comprehensive time to do that. The school committee interviews will occur- The school committee interviews will occur in the evening, followed by this full day of events. And that will be in the school committee chamber here in room two ten of the education center. It will be in person only. We will record the meetings, however, we won't. Broadcast those simultaneously. The recordings will be posted to our website. Once all of the interviews are complete. That's so that we don't advantage or disadvantage any candidate based on their order of their interviews. Next slide. This one's fun. This one is just teeing up that we have so much gratitude and appreciation to a number of people. And here Stephen, you can just, you can, yeah, thank you. You got it. So the most gratitude that we can express goes to these folks, some of whom are the members of the superintendent search committee. Aisha Farag, Kathy Lopes, Diana Beck, Jackie Mann, Tim Lizinski, Terry Bancroft, Jesse Brackett, Phoebe Anthony. Jesse Champion, Amy Davenport, Reggie Jean, Natasha Goddard. Dong Jian, Carl Finn, Rajiv Parlikar, Emily Prender and myself, Tamika Osheski. All of us have contributed. I don't even know how many hours. It's, it's, it's not something I want to add up. It's been a heck of an amount of work. And a wonderful journey with all of you. And I think our results are stellar. I so much appreciate. All of you for the work that you've put in, the perspectives that you've shared and the. Or I think it's something that our district is going to be very much benefiting from for years to come. So thank you all very much. The next group of folks to thank on that list, she's been amazing. She has been. The staff liaison to the superintendent search committee and the H Y consultants. And she's our school committee executive assistant. And so she'll of course continue. To assist us throughout the process, as will Julie McDonough, the N P S communications director. And a huge thank you to all of the staff who are assisting to plan and coordinate the finalists visits to Newton. That includes our principals who are hosting our school tours, our union leadership who have been consulted and have been great. About thinking through the schedules and our interim superintendent Kathy Smith with the assistance of assistant superintendents Toby Romer, Aisha Farag. And of course, our director of technology over there, Stephen Riteni. And though I didn't put you on the list, Renee, Casey, Liam. I, I deeply gratitude or appreciation for all of you as well. I know you will all pitch in to assist. Throughout the process as needed. And we very much appreciate that as a committee. So questions for us, Emily, would you like to say anything at this point?
I second everything you say in terms of the thanks to everyone who is involved. It definitely takes a village and it did in this particular case. And I'm very excited about the next steps. One quick thing though, just again, to reiterate and remind school committee members to please send in your questions. But I also know that there was a promise that we would be including the questions that had been asked. In the semi finalist interviews and if you, oh, sorry, if you open the folder that we sent you with the information, it's one of the documents there. So it's there, you just need to open the link that was sent.
Thanks, Emily. Good reminder. Any questions for us?
Just a question. Emily, so you mentioned that those questions have already been asked. Did that mean we probably should have new questions or we could still ask?
No, not necessarily. So just remember that the interview process that was done with the exception of the three of us. The rest of the school committee has not heard those answers. So it's like, we're wiping the slate clean. It's a totally different group of people who are interviewing. And I think asking, you know, if there ends up being overlap, that's totally fine and appropriate.
That, that, that's good. Okay, that's what I expect. Thanks.
And so the only other thing to add there is that. The interviews which were conducted in the executive session, all of that information is confidential, very highly confidential. And as Emily said, it's been wiped clean at this point with our three publicly announced finalists. And so. You can take a question on first impression, you will have everything that was asked, all the questions that were asked. Of in the semifinalist rounds and you'll have that, you can ask a question if it resonates with you or you can develop a new question as well. Any other questions? Well, thanks to my fellow search committee members for joining us tonight. Again, thank you so much for all of your work, all your contribution. We very much appreciate it. We're in your debt. So thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm waiting for someone else to go to the next thing, but that's me. All right. So up next, we have a fiscal and operational update. With Liam Hurley, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Financial and Administrative Officer. Are we joined by other folks, Liam?
Possibly Alyssa or Sean.
Okay. The who pops on.
Sure if they're there. Good evening, everyone. So just want to get right into the fiscal and ops report. Thanks again to a big, big group of people that go through this process. Actually, this involves the H R department, student services, obviously, business, finance and planning team facility. So we send this out, we need a couple, we give them a couple of weeks notice. They all have reports that they actually have to get to us, giving a lot of infusion. So it's a real, real good process. We're going to continue to update you folks on these, you know, either monthly or maybe every two months. As we go, we'll do another one, I think, in March before the override. So I think the overall trend is a positive trend for us and this is something that I think I'm hoping to see. We are right now at fifty percent of the annual budget for the year. This is actually slightly better. I don't want to get our hopes up too high. If you remember, is what we, last year, we actually ended up transferring a lot of expenses over to the city. But we are in a good position. A few of the highlights, I would say is salaries and benefits. Are nearing almost a million dollars under budget. Again, this is a large piece for us. That's almost two hundred and thirty million dollars in salaries and benefits. So. That's not a large percentage, but it does show directionally. This is where we're trending right now. Few areas, maintenance is projected to be over budget. This has been an area that continues, we struggle with. Some of those costs are actually part of the N E C P construction costs. I'm working closely with public buildings. They may be depending on their final project funding, they may be able to transfer some of those expenses back. So I'll certainly report. Report back to you on that one. Some areas that we've talked about in terms of saving on the expense side include our transportation. In our tuition expense line items, transportation, particularly on the special education vans. We've just not had the same number of drivers and we're needing to have more students riding in those vans. And tuition, again, just a lot of students that were doing a great job in district and also school districts out of private schools that are not able to take all the students that we have. But again, we're still serving those students within our district. Another item, equipment is another area, again, particularly furniture, there were some expenses that we've had for N E C P. I'll talk a little bit about the N E C P move and some of the great stuff that's, that's, that's transpired there over the last couple of weeks. So overall, we're showing about a six hundred and eighty thousand dollar surplus and we're also showing a million dollar budget reserve. So I'm feeling comfortable and confident about where we'll end. That's going to play a role in our F Y twenty-four deliberation. I will give a little preview as well, kind of right after this, momentarily here on that one. So that's just the very high level and just open it up to questions.
Thanks, Liam. And we were joined by Alyssa Behringer, Senior Budget Analyst as well. I see you, Alyssa. Hi. So questions from the members. Go ahead, Rajiv.
Liam, thank you. Positive news. We'll keep our fingers crossed that the trend continues. Just a comment to share, which is around the maintenance budget. Certainly, this has come up in a lot of the meetings we've had with P T Os at various schools. And, and I think what we're seeing this year is the same as we've seen in, in many previous years, which is that. There's a certain budget allocation and then we, we blow past it. And, and we know we're going to. Because we have a lot of, a lot of buildings, some of which are old, et cetera. One of the things I, I would suggest we think about as, as we go forward is, is there a, a more. Realistic number as opposed to a plug we can put in there? Because I, I think to some extent, families in the city or our citizens would be surprised by what it takes to maintain so many buildings and. Keep things running for our students. So just, just my thought on that. And I, and I know you're looking at it and I know it's a challenge.
Yeah, it's a challenge. I would just comment, you know, the current plan right now is to restore and again, we reduced our budget in F Y twenty-three. It was, I would say it was more of a paper reduction. The city's picking up about four hundred and ten thousand dollars. My hope would be to obviously restore that in the F Y twenty-four budget and actually grow that at, you know, at some inflation factor. If we start, and I would like to, and I think I've reported before that historically, we have been in the five to eight hundred thousand dollars over budget in that kind of gross. Kind of maintenance budget. It's, this is an area, again, if we want to go to that full, full level of funding, no, Rajiv, it's an area then that we would need to look for other areas of reduction. So my hope would be to kind of slowly build this up. I think the city has done this with its snow and ice reserve. It never was funded appropriately, although this year doesn't seem to bring any heavy snow. But it was never funded and to me, if we can just continually step this up, we need to do the same thing with I T. Same thing with one-to-one, we'll talk a little bit about that. We've gone to one-to-one, there's about two hundred thousand dollars in there, but that was really meant for high school. And we're really much more district wide. And so some of the things we'll talk about. So those are two particular areas that we certainly need more funding. I think my colleagues, I think, you know, Renee and we'd talk about other areas that they need as well. Maintenance is certainly an area that we have been underfunding.
Thanks, Rajiv. Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks, Liam. Very quick question. You highlight four point six million of one-time funding for this year. Including three point five of circuit breaker. What was the other one point one?
That was a combination of a few things. It was about seven hundred and ten thousand dollars of S R funding. We explained that kind of in the, in the, in the budget document that the F Y two, F Y twenty-three budget document. As well as that four hundred and ten thousand dollars of one-time maintenance. So I call that kind of one-time funding to get it there. So there was some money that, that we worked closely with the city. Collaborate with the city to basically reduce our reliance in one year. We need to make that up though, or find another funding source. And certainly that, that kind of rolls into this override, why we need, you know, talking about the need for this override.
Thanks, Chris. Any other question? Go ahead, Onping.
In the mayor's override proposal, we mentioned there's some kind of increase of expenses for coming year. And here you noted again, beginning of F Y twenty-four, Operational Services Division has approved fourteen rate increase for special. For private school tuition. That's, that's probably the highest among all other increases. And N P S is pursuing legislative advocacy to reduce this significant increase. So just give us a little bit of background, why it's increased so much and why we need to kind of fight a little bit to reduce.
Sure. And we're actually, I'm even going to touch on that on Ping in the F Y twenty-four preview. So if I, if I transition, so that's really something we're going to talk about, we've been talking about. So if I can just talk about that in a presentation, I'm going to give a brief presentation on F Y twenty-four. Is that okay?
Thanks. Great. Yeah.
Any other questions with this part? Nope. All right. Sorry, double checking. So up next, we'll have a facilities update. Am I out of order? Nope, facilities update.
Facilities, okay. I was going to give.
Actually, go ahead in the order. Go ahead.
I was just going to do, Stephen, just a very quick, it's a kind of a repeat of some of our slides.
Absolutely, yeah.
On the F Y twenty-four, just to kind of get to this. So this is some of the items. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate that. This will be, this will be brief, but we did want to give you folks some, kind of an update of where we stand with our F Y twenty-four planning. We've been really, you know, spending a lot of time, three or four hours today, just in terms of planning. F Y twenty-four, multiple meetings that all my colleagues have been putting together with, with their level groups. So just a quick review, some of our budget rule. Kathy, I'm not sure. I mean, if you want to talk, just to kind of start this off in terms of thinking about twenty-four.
And I'm glad, Liam, that you, you started with talking about the amount of time. So I'm sure everybody realizes that we finished up on the twenty-third. Doing our presentation. We have had no less than, I think, you know, six or eight meetings with our central staff, working with it, just to make sure everybody understands. You know, with our principals, with our department heads, looking at everything from. I'm going to call it efficiencies, if there's such a thing at this point, but that's something you do in every budget, you know, moving forward. But also preparing as we go forward. And I also want to say at the start of this, that we have one school committee meeting, as everyone's aware of, in the month of February. We have the vacation break. We do have a meeting on March first, which is a Wednesday of that first week back. And we are preparing to be able to share. You know, some of the reductions and the suggestions. And I want to say to the school committee, we're not only looking at. Reductions as we have to do in preparation. If in fact, the override does not pass, I want to say to everybody, I remain. Very, very optimistic and hopeful that we will have this infusion of the four point five million dollars in our operating budget. But in preparation, we're not only making recommendations, but a rationale. And also looking at options. So conversations today about a possible program. As children age up, looking at a successful program, which can be very costly when you're talking about. Some of our students that we keep in district, it's, it's excellent. We've seen a lot of success. But that is a cost that we knew was coming. And again, we're looking at putting it in, but talking about options, talking about rationale. Also looking about different programming and we're also highlighting, so what are we doing moving forward? We're highlighting areas and talking about just to be prepared. The override passes, this is the area of, let's say, green recommendations to come back, you know, prioritize. This is what would come back. You know, an area of yellow that we have to have more discussion. And what I'm saying about an area of red, sometimes there are reductions that you make in a budget. So it'll be more clear as we move forward, but we just want to hear the work that is going on. As we start to prepare our recommendations to the school committee. So the one thing I said to Liam is, I know this is a repeat and we have a lot on the agenda. But I want to make it clear that we're trying to maintain the current level of service provided to our students. And build that sustainable budget over time, hence some of the discussion that I just had.
Thanks, Kathy. So we've, we've looked at this already. Some of the growing student needs is one of our major budget drivers. I don't think you can, you know, you, you can't. Come out of a conversation right now with the teacher or principal, hearing about those needs. It's real. It's with us. We're not alone in that, but this is certainly significant. The rising costs and expenses, I think we all can experience this and know this to be true. And then obviously using of one-time funds, a little bit, Chris, which we just talked about. So these are some of our major budget drivers in F Y twenty-four. On Ping, I just, I didn't want to not get back to this, out of district tuition rate increase. So this is really. O S D stands for Operational Services Division. They actually set, they are the ones that set the rates that private schools. When we have to and we don't have many students, we have between a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and thirty. I think the report has a hundred and twenty students. That are out of, out of district. That means we are not able to service those students and it is in the best interest of the students and the families agree to send them out of Newton. That's also why Newton has done an incredible job investing in these programs. One of them, Kathy was talking about thirteen point three million dollars or around a hundred thousand dollars. Per student to send out a district. Again, this is kind of, this is the, the, the piece we look at, look at. The rate increase for the last number of years, I've seen a, a history of this. It has been typically one to three percent rate increases, more keeping up with what a typical school budget increase might be. For, I, I think there's a variety of reasons. They looked at a wage stability factor. They are, they have proposed a fourteen percent rate increase. So that means that every one of those out of district schools can increase their rate by fourteen percent. That would have the impact of approximately one point eight million dollars on our budget. Now, there are some mitigating factors that we need to think about and look at and what ultimately ends up in the budget, maybe slightly less than that. It's possible we get some additional circuit breaker. However, circuit breaker is, is, is a year trailing. So expenses in F Y twenty-four next year won't actually be reimbursed until F Y twenty-five. So the reimbursement we're getting from in F Y twenty-three are actually what we report in F Y twenty-two. And this goes back to the kind of the piece that Kathy's been working on from March third. Talking with the tri-county superintendents and legislators to get them here for, for a breakfast. And talk about some of the, the impact. And this is for Newton, that's obviously a large number, but even smaller districts, there was a long business manager listserv. Noting how much this was for each of these districts and many of them was a smaller amount. But their, their budgets in many, you know, in many cases were, were a quarter of the Newton budget. So. Five hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, those increases were very large on a thirty or forty million dollar budget. So same type of impact on those schools. Kathy, I don't know if you want to talk anymore about the, the.
I, I've been talking about it, I think, for two or three months. It was such a surprise when we looked at, you know, a fourteen percent increase. It really is unheard of. At this point here, I, as I told you, I've met with our tri-county superintendents just last week. So we are hosting on March third. Again, thank you, Mayor Fuller. But we are bringing our, I've had some outreach with our senator, our legislators. Just to make sure again, that, that they certainly are aware of some of the concerns. We have, we are poised that day with superintendents from around our area to not only. Share this particular, you know, budget buster, whether you're a big district like Newton. Or you're a smaller district, it is having an impact statewide. Whether you're a big district like Newton or you're a smaller district, it is having an impact statewide. So what you hear me talking about is happening at the North Shore Superintendent Roundtable and the South Shore Superintendent Roundtable. So this is advocacy going on all over the state. So we are going to not only talk about this, we have a couple of other items that we'll share with our legislators. And hopefully, as Liam said, the concern is the kind of relief. There could be relief in circuit breaker across the board. Which is probably something that they're already having discussions. But it will not impact us this year. So there are opportunities, whether it's pothole funds. And we are all anxiously awaiting, I think, the governor's budget, which I believe comes out before March first. I think it has to come out before March first. Or on March first, Mayor?
I think we can expect at least with the cherry seat numbers before then, so we may get a sneak preview.
And also, I, I want to tell everybody, when you talk about this kind of advocacy, the other thing is gratitude. So for the past couple of years, whether it's been, you know, S R money or the CARES Act or AOP or, or people coming together. And you talk about the, the very support, certainly for this community. We are very grateful for people coming together, whether it was lunches, whether it was technology, whether it was social and emotional support. So it gives us an opportunity to also be thankful and to certainly put forward our requests as we continue to move beyond the pandemic.
Thank you. So these are, I won't be there with these, again, health insurance. The city is going out to bid actually for health insurance. We're going to get some information. The information may be after the budget process, but this will be very interesting for us to see, see what's out there. We've talked about, we actually have gone out to bid for our special education vans. We're expecting between seven and ten percent rate increase there. And then our gas and electric utilities and what we're expecting, particularly on the gas supply rate and our electric usage is back up as well. Few, again, this is a slide we had. This is just a repeat. So some unknown, certainly the outcome of the March fourteenth operational override. All of our collectively bargained contracts are, are expired at the end of the school year. The full impact of, of, of the inflationary pressures on us, we're, we're trying to finalize that right now. And then some of the pieces we're just talking about, state aid, that's money that the city gets, but it's really important money for the city. Chapter seventy, which is really the state's way, that's their educational funding formula. Kathy spent a lot of time working on that chapter seventy money, circuit breaker and certainly our grants. Excuse me, alright. This is a, the override slide here, just certainly wanted to highlight, you know, the two debt exclusion numbers countryside and Franklin, just to kind of put it back out there. The reason for the difference on countryside is for these projects to have a similar budget amount right now in the low sixty million dollar range. So it's not a difference in funding. It's just the fact that the MSBA would contribute more. And then the other piece would basically be the override money for us. So the, the piece that is circled here, apologized is the, is the four point five million dollars that we've been talking about. And we've also got Horseman Elementary School, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A few key takeaways here, almost seventy five percent of all this funding is, is attributable and going towards Newton Public Schools. I'd also just highlight certainly the parks, fields, courts and playgrounds. Many of those are around our schools, we're, we're the beneficiary of those, of those funds, as well as sustainability and climate resiliency. Something like Peterson, the boiler, the idea of electrifying our buildings, that's something that is really Josh is, is focused on, we're focused on. So we're excited about that. We'll also hear a little bit about some of the phase three solar project work that we're going to do. So these are the, the, the votes and the pieces. I just, I would put it to the mayor if she wants to add anything to this, or if I got any of that off. She's been, she's been talking this for a while. Okay. Areas of reduction, we, again, we took, as we looked at this, if we're looking at this type of budget gap, I think it's clear that we're not going to, we're going to have to touch. Areas getting to the classroom, which is really the last stop for us, but with that size, we would look at non-personnel expenses, we'd look at administrative and operations. Extracurricular activities, we heard a number of parents tonight talking about how important it is, some of those, those things for our students, I think classroom and school personnel. This is some of the ongoing work here. We've done our staffing reconciliation process. This is actually a process we do with the HR department. We go line by line, staff by staff, and we actually send it out to the principals to review and confirm that each of these staff members are at their buildings. We go through this is in some ways our, our bottom line zero budgeting, particularly on our staffing. That work is done. We've been doing, our colleagues have been doing level meetings to review, incorporate all the feedback. With this, with these possible reductions, this is really challenging work that for them to be going through and for all of us to be going through. Completing our departmental budget and then making sure that we have all our enrollment driven reductions. So again, Kathy talked about, we will have reductions. We do this every year. When Newton was growing at a time, we would add for enrollment. As we have declined, particularly at the K date level, we will have a reduction in staffing. I think the high schools, there actually may need to be some addition. There was supposed to be some reduction last year and, and, and total number of students and there was actually an increase. So they're almost two years behind in terms of their enrollment numbers right now. And then obviously some of the work to close this gap, developing some, some fee increases. I like to present some, some fee increase ideas to you folks to get your approval. This would only be, we can only do that with your approval. And look at some, some areas there with and without the override. Any possible expense reductions, looking at class size scenarios that we would have here. Particularly Aisha and Toby are looking at class sizes and team sizes at the middle school, what this impact would have to be, number of, of staff. And what that impact would be on our, on our students. And then looking at kind of some data on extracurricular, extracurricular and athletic programs to target some specific reductions there. Again, really difficult things, things that we don't want to do, but things that I think we need to look at. Our next steps, certainly to refine our, our assumptions going into this budget. As you know, you've, you've asked us to look at two budget scenarios. The first budget assumes an override. The second one is without the override. We're certainly trying to build community awareness. We've been doing that now for a while. We're going to continue to update the school committee. We talked a little bit about this work on with the OSD and the, the district rate setting. That's really what that is about. And then March fourteenth, March fourteenth is the, the City of Newton override ballot questions. I do believe some early ballots are, are mail in ballots have gone out to, to our residents. So that is out there. So that's the, the budget preview, Kathy. I don't know if any parting, parting piece you have there.
You know, like all of you this evening, we sat and listened to during public comment, three parents that again, talked about the importance of your. Overall education that you have always provided to the students in Newton. That is our intent to continue to do that. So when you hear us talk about reductions, we're preparing, but that is not our goal. You asked me months ago as superintendent, you said to me, superintendent, what do we need in this budget? You know, what, what are the needs of the district? And you were very keenly aware of different presentations for, from a number of our departments. So we will have that information, just so we never lose that direction of what does it take? In twenty twenty three, going into twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, to educate a student, this generation of students. Making sure that we focus on academic excellence, we focus on equity, we focus on academic opportunities. We have heard parents talking to us. We were at one of the schools, I think on Friday, it was very emotional. And they were talking about the challenges for families, the challenges for students. We were talking about the challenges for staff. So we're keenly aware of all of those things and we're going to do the very best we can to dig deep. That's what is happening at the meetings we're presently having. Digging deep, trying to make recommendations, trying to keep away from our students. But what we can do, and I'm going to ask the community again, when you looked at that last slide with all of our students. Athletics, students in classrooms, you know, people getting together, clubs, extracurricula. So our goal and our opportunity is please be educated. You can go to the city website, you can go to the school website, you can come to forums, you can ask questions. We're putting up frequently asked questions, so people can continually see this information. So what I am asking on behalf of our students and on behalf of our school district is to educate yourself. And to make sure that you are an active part of this process. That means gathering as much information so you can make an informed choice. So we will continue our work and, and we will continue, as I said, on March first to bring you clearer updates.
Thanks, Liam. Thanks, Kathy. Any question from the members? Students, any question as well? Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that update. And Liam is going to be staying. We have a facilities update next. Are we joined by Stephanie or?
Yes, Stephanie. Yep, she's there. She's.
Director of Planning, Project Management, Sustainability.
She's been a little under the weather, but if there's some, I'm going to take this, if there's some questions, she'll, she'll, she'll jump in here. So you've got a nice detail. Thank you to Stephanie, Dave Stickney, Josh Moore is kind of updating this. A couple of key, you've got a nice detailed memo here, but just a couple of key pieces. Stephanie, if I miss anything, just jump on in. NECP really obviously great, great news and a great building for us. We had the open house on January twenty fifth and a ribbon cutting then. And then on the twentieth as well, kind of a community forum. So really exciting to be at that building. As reminded, they've got a couple of extra classrooms built into that space that if they need to grow, and we expect that they probably will grow, that they could move into that. They've got a great van area. I think some things that we're thinking about right now, just in terms of transfer, of parking, where staff, where parents are parking. Kathleen, I think may want to make some tweaks over, over time. They've been in a building at one fifty Jackson with a massive parking lot. Going to an area with about eighteen onsite parking spaces, but we've got that whole length of Albemarle with almost a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and ninety six spaces going that whole length. So there's actually a lot of spaces. They're just not quite as convenient as they were at one fifty Jackson. So I think we may look at some, some small changes to signage, things like that over on Albemarle, keeping it there. So great news, some nice pictures there on that and as, as well as that playground. Lick and Elliott is continuing to move along here. There's been a lot of meetings in terms of looking at this project. They have been meeting, looking at some areas where as inflation has impacted that, that budget, where areas that we can continue to basically have a great. Specifically looking at the lobbies, but some of the designs that come up with have been fantastic. So I think that building is going to continue to progress and, and, and move nicely. We still are on track. Demolition would be anticipated in, in the fall of twenty twenty three with an opening of twenty twenty five. So a lot of moving pieces at Lick and Elliott. And again, kudos to that, that project team there. Countryside, you know, you folks have voted the educational program at countryside. It's becoming clear, I think, to the team that it is likely a new building at four hundred and sixty five students. So not a renovation and not, you know, I think given the existing site with its wetlands issues, I think it's likely an area a little bit north of, of where it stands right now. But I think that that's really where the, the preliminary design plan is going to be coming up with. Was, is likely a four hundred and sixty five number. We were asked to look at both, two enrollments. But that lower enrollment number that the MSBA looked at, I don't think is really feasible, just given the, the development, particularly on the, on the south side of the city. There's a number of projects, particularly the Northland project. They've got another one across the way. And we also want to think about Avalon. Avalon is currently, is in, is squarely in the countryside district. And I think we'd like to, in an ideal world, get them to actually once, one elementary school if we can. So that's countryside. It's moving along. Obviously in the MSBA, we just have to kind of go step by step. Thankful to Alex and Josh and Stephanie, just kind of going through their process with that. Franklin and, and Horseman certainly are continuing on as we've done here. We're sort of kind of in a pause mode, obviously for this override. But these projects are certainly as critical as anything for us to keep these moving forward. We've had done some really great work with Horseman, with our architect in terms of showing some possible design. Where this would be cited and what we'd need at that building. I think Josh has really laid out a really nice visual to showing kind of the deficiencies in size. From the classrooms to the library, to the cafeteria, things like that, that, that we, we really need to, to increase that size will help. Underwood and Ward Elementary Schools, as you know, the mayor's allocated a hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding to hire a consultant. We've have two, we're called designers, really they're architects. So one is Raymond, Raymond Design Associates, R D A, that is the vendor that's currently on Horseman. As well as another firm, Perkins Eastman, who I believe was the Anger architect as well. So they are going to be going through with the Designer Selection Committee, that's in D S E. That is a, a city held organization with some experts in this field to review proposals for design services. And be making a recommendation on who the best designer would be to help us through the Ward Underwood project. So that's very exciting. So that's on February sixteenth. My hope is we'd have somebody on board by about March to, to, to go from there. We will have a working group that would, you know, be as inclusive as we can, bringing people in. We'd certainly be helping, you know, community forums with, at both of those schools as well. And then coming up with a recommendation to you folks, kind of, you know, before January of next year would be the goal. Just a couple of other, you know, MSBA is actually asking us to do a post occupancy survey, which we're happy to participate in. There's some nice, you know, the solars projects have been on hold. And one of the vendors, I think McCrary had really backed out on a number of those. Bill Ferguson is fantastic. He's a co-director of sustainability for the city. He's trying to restart these projects and he's Scott M. Resco and another company called Select that are looking at this. You've got some that are completed, but you've got some other items here in terms of summer of twenty twenty four. Looking at roofs and looking at parking canopies. We put a number, we, we completed a few of them, but there was a number that were put on hold. And they're really trying to get those, get those completed, which would be fantastic for us. Obviously from a green perspective. It's unclear, I think to me at this point, whether or not that translates into savings, pure savings. But I do think it might help in actually further growth or further cost escalation. So I'd like to come back to, and you know, once I get some more information from Bill, what that actually will do for our utility savings for us. But we do know it's certainly the green, the green thing to do for us. Helpsy bins are out there. We've got our second check from Helpsy. We will likely, we need to add a few at a few of our various schools. Actually, we'll be probably moving a few of them as well. Those have been, I, I, I think have been a nice addition to some schools. We've gotten some feedback from some parents and some, some citizens in, you know, poor location or visibility. We certainly want to make sure that we hear about that and get, get Helpsy out there to make sure that those bins are cleared. We don't want that. So to date, we've generated a little more than thirteen thousand dollars of revenue. The idea actually goes to the city fund, a little bit like McKinney Vento. At some point, probably once a year, we'd request that funding, come to Newton Public Schools. And then we would like to identify a, a kind of an expense associated with that. Ideally would be towards some type of green environmental program that we would do within the school district. So again, that, that revenue needs to be associated, associated with the expense that we would put for that. Lot of transportation pieces moving on here, very exciting on a safe routes to school grant of six hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars at Parker Road and Route nine. I don't know the extent of what that will exactly do there, but that's, and these are usually multi-years to, in the making. But really great news, the city continues to pursue these grants and try to get, try to get, you know, our, our, our safest routes possible we can. Neighborways is a, is a, is a program that looked at Albemarle. That'll be interesting, I think, this summer to see what they may do. They want to put in a bike lane. They actually may look at, and this is not final, they may actually look at backend parking at, along Albemarle. Right now it's head in parking. According to them, it's actually safer to do potentially the backend parking along that Albemarle way. Which would be very interesting to see if that's a, that's a, a good project. So we can get some more information and kind of some of their concepts we have before, before us and, and present that to you as well. Dudley Road update, that is something that the, the owner has approached the city and around fifteen acres. And I think this is just in kind of preliminary concept in the American, correct me if I'm off on anything. But they've gone out and solicited some, some partnership possibilities with private firms to see if there is any possibility to see what we could do with this area. This, this really a butts Newton South, we've got our kind of metal buildings and modular building on one side. And there's a large, for the most part, this is heavily treed. It does have a lot of rock in our cropping and ledge. Little bit challenging in terms of development, but I think the idea, at least from my perspective, is, is, is there some, some uses that would be, you know, beneficial for the city? For the residents and possibly if there's any some beneficial uses for the school department, I think would be very interesting. So that obviously that's part of, in my opinion, a three, so really part of a three, you know, building campus with oak, brown and south. And certainly it's much, much closer to Newton South, but I do want to think long. And I think if, if we can partner with the city and the developer thinking about, is there some green space? Is there some outdoor classroom or is there some more defined trails in that area that would help our students? I think would be great. So Mayor, I don't know if you have any more on the Dudley Road, but that's an interesting project.
With Liam's help, there was a group that did review all the proposals that came in. One was selected, now Civic Co. And now we're working with them and with the potential seller to see if we can actually pull it off. I'm not sure yet. We'll see. But yes, we're trying to see if there's some property right next to Newton South that can be reserved for city or school purposes. As well as do appropriate housing and appropriate open space. We'll see.
Lot of uses come to mind, so we'll, we'll, we'll think of what we can do. Synthetic turf, turf replacements, thanks to Nicole at the Park Recreation and Culture. They've been doing a lot of work and really feeling a lot of questions on that. So Newton North and Newton South, got some turf replacement projects at these, at our fields there. And then field lighting projects, we need to get the Newton North project completed. They've got a lot of the materials there. Hoping to have that in by this upcoming spring season. We really like to have that completed at Newton North. So they've been really very, very, very busy doing, you know, upgrading our fields and certainly some of that money that we talk about in the override is to continue the maintenance of these fields. So Stephanie, did I miss, miss anything? You would have been more thorough than me, but I wanted to hit some of the highlights.
You, you hit everything. Thank you, Liam.
Alright, thank you very much. Kathy, I see a question.
So thanks, Liam. Just two quick questions. So first on countryside. I, I note that you've explained that the school building committee has reviewed the preliminary design program and has been voted. I, I note that you've explained that the school building committee has reviewed the preliminary design program and has been voted to submit it to the MSBA. Do you expect to get feedback from the MSBA on that this spring? And if so, what, what's the timing on that like? And how does that part work?
So is it on our four hundred and sixty-five student count? Is that the, is that your question? We'll get feedback on that. Stephanie, I don't know if you, you know, I asked, I've asked specifically to Donna that question. Stephanie, I don't know if you have a better sense in terms of response and, and if the MSBA, my understanding is that we need, we've needed to study both of these. And the way that I was just, was told was that if we believe that the four sixty-five is the right number, as long as we've studied both of these, that that's what we can put forward. So I don't, I don't know if there will be a back and forth. I thought that there might be, but I, I, at this point, I don't believe that there will be a back and forth. But that, if that is our preferred design enrollment number, then that would be acceptable to the MSBA. Stephanie, anything, anything I, I've got off on that?
So the preliminary design program was submitted on January eighteenth. And I believe if you were asking about timing, I believe the MSBA has, I want to say eight to twelve weeks to review it and provide comments back. And then the following submission basically incorporates the response to those comments. Does that answer your question?
It does. So it sounds like you expect comments back from them.
Yes, they, they will give us very detailed comments on the ed plan and all of the other materials that are submitted as part of the preliminary design program. And, and we are expected to respond to those comments in the next submission, which is the preferred schematic report. And I don't know the exact timing, but I believe they have eight to twelve weeks to, to review the preliminary design program.
So just to put a little perspective around what the submission was, it was, I think, over five hundred pages. Am I correct in that? Yeah. So, and it wasn't just the design and, you know, the enrollment and the ed plan, that was one piece of a much larger document. So we're going to get feedback on all of that.
Exactly.
And then I had a second quick question on the Warden Underwood Working Group. So separate from the hiring of the consultants, have you started the outreach to the schools to select community members for that group?
We have, yes. So we've talked to both principals. I believe that they've got at least one parent member at each school. So that, that can continue. I think we'll report a little bit more on that, but we certainly have talked to them. And I know, I should, I actually want to go set up a time to actually meet with actually both, both of the staff there and talk a little bit about the process and maybe get some feedback from them. We have not set that yet up, but that is something we, we do want to do very soon.
All right. Is it, you're thinking about in like the March timeframe?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks Kathy. Go ahead, Rajiv and then Emily.
Thank you. I'll actually piggyback a little bit on, on what Kathy asked. We, we had a PTO, we had a meeting with the PTO at, at Ward on, on Friday and, and the process came up. And, and I think there was a little bit of confusion. You have it very clearly laid out here, Liam. That the, the consultants will come in, they'll do a study, there'll be recommendations, the recommendations will come back here, will be discussed, reviewed, et cetera. I think there was a little bit of confusion around whether the consultants would come up with a decision, which, which we all know is not the case. But I think we just need to continue communicating that process as you have documented here when we talk to the community. Because there are understandably concerns around what's going to happen with each of the schools. And, you know, whether the, we need to make sure the community understands there's an opportunity to provide feedback, that there will be recommendations, those will be discussed. It's, we're, we're not talking about any kind of arbitrary process here. And I think all of us understand this, but I think we need to also continue making, reinforcing that with the community.
Absolutely. And I, I don't have the, you know, we've given out a kind of a detailed, kind of, you know, step timeline of what that consult would be doing again. Consultant won't be, you know, you know, saying this is, the school committee ultimately actually makes the choice of what we would be doing here. We're going to be looking at options, presenting options, I think, to the school committee. There's going to be benefits and there's going to be negatives on, on all those options, I think, as well. But ultimately will be, you know, you, the school committee, and it's going to be, you know, interesting to see, and, and, you know, we want to make sure this is a really inclusive process and go in. So I think as we kick this off, we can kind of make sure that we really detail again what that process would be. So I think once that went, once the designer is on board, either Ward, you know, meetings with Ward Underwood and then also obviously, you know, detailing it again with you folks. But I think kind of going through that process, what we're going to be doing, what we're going to be looking at, I think would be really critical. So we don't want them to think that, that, you know, that the designer is making that choice.
I understand. And, and one other comment around Lincoln Elliott. I've heard a lot from, from the, the community. Primarily Non-Antum, but I think others from, from the Newton Center side as well about the new designs. And I think this went, this, the, the, the preview that, that the architects and did with Josh Morris also resulted in similar comments. There are certainly concerns around the, some of the proposed design changes around taking away the, the second story at that level. Concerns around the amount of light, the, the flow of people as they, and students as they go into the, the space. So I, I think everyone is hopeful that the, the architects will be able to come up with, with some changes that, that will both reduce costs, but going to maintain the, the incredible designs that they've put in front of us previously. So I just wanted to share that there, there are community concerns around what's been, what was reviewed at the previous meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I, I know that there's been some concerns and I know the architect is working very hard and may be helpful at an upcoming meeting possibly, and they've got some really great software. They've worked really closely. We spent, I think, several hours literally zooming in just in the, in the lobby, in the library, where things go. You know, I think that they had some really interesting ideas. Emily, I know, is intimately involved with that in terms of looking at that, and, and that lobby, how the windows look, you know, where the windows are located, making sure there's light in there. So that may be something I think would be worthwhile for the school committee, if you're interested to kind of have a, take a look at. I think that more is becoming more and more comfortable with that design and how that would look. Really wants to make that, that feel like an inclusive and kind of, you know, exciting area for, for all of our students to be in. And it's, you know, that's the main new part of the building and that wants to make sure that that does look great.
Right. The, 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 kind of the three D fly-through that, that was done previously actually got people very excited. And, and that's the focus area for the changes, which I think has led to some of the additional concerns.
I think the, the, some of the plans I've seen for the kind of the, some of the revisions, we've talked about being on a single level. The interesting part is it still has got a great ceiling height in that it is one level, but it is a really high, you know, a, a tall ceiling height. Windows light, a lot of colors. So I think we could look at a, the appropriate time of the school committee doing another fly-by with the architect looking at that. And I think you could see how exciting that space is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rajiv. And I, I just want to second everything you've said. I, I really appreciate those comments. And I think it would be good for that presentation to the school committee, just so that we can have the assurances that I know that the team is working on to make sure that that project is really something that shines. And, and we understand that there are some budgetary considerations that have to be made, but the design has to be, you know, really hit all the bells to make sure that this community is proud of it as well. Go ahead, Emily.
I just want to add something to this conversation. So there, there have been multiple presentations and I'm not quite sure which one it is that, that you're referring to. Cause there was original redesign with this giant corridor that sort of led to nowhere and everything felt very, the ceilings were low, it felt dark, it wasn't, the arrangement wasn't, I don't think, there were a lot of us that weren't happy with it, myself included. And then the architects have been doing work and have designed something which they actually had the little like swoop through where you get to go in and see where everything is. So that, that exists for that. But yeah, it is now, so it's not a single story, it's a story and a half. There's an entrance way and it's what more and more keeps referring to is the wow factor. Like you walk in and the, the media center slash library is glass, beautiful. You can look right in. There are cool looking nooks that are there and it is a story and a half with windows at the top around also letting in natural light. So I feel like this revision, which isn't done yet, by the way, I think we have another two-hour meeting in person on Wednesday to talk about this. But, but there are definitely steps being taken in the, what, what I consider to be a really good direction for the space. And I am far more comfortable with this second round of design than the original, what had been proposed.
Thank you. That, that's great to hear. I might be one design iteration behind. So we'll look forward to seeing the next one.
My reaction was your reaction to the first one. So I totally understand. It, it really was. Yeah, yeah.
It would be, it would be nice to see.
So I actually have a question for Liam. So my question has to do with the solar projects, which I know have been on hold for a very long time. And so I also understand and recognize that the savings is not nearly what they were at the beginning. However, it doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. My, my question is, after the end, if everything is on time of summer of twenty twenty-four, are we done with solar projects except for new construction? Or is there another phase four that I'm just not remembering?
You know, good question. I'm not aware of a phase four at this point. We certainly want to get through phase three. I think, you know, the city would look at, you know, on the school, school side, we certainly want to look at any and all opportunities where it would work. It is interesting. It, it, you know, you may know from a house, it's, it's not so easy. You've got to make sure you've got the right location, the right tilt, the right roof, trees not in the way. There's a lot of, of pieces that would go into it. So the lot of work has obviously gone into this phase three. So I would, I would not say there would not be a phase four, but I know the focus right now is phase three. And then thinking about what's that cost, you know, even constructing these with the steel that they need to put in there, that, that the expense to actually construct these, you know, typically has not been much, has not been really an expense to the city of Newton. They're getting these, getting a lot of different variety of ways of, of credits for, for putting these in. But at some point, I don't know if the economics continue. So I, I'm not an expert in that, but I think it's, it's going to be interesting to see. But I certainly would be for if it's, if it has a benefit and it has a green initiative, a green kind of element to it continues. Or as, as, as solar panels get, you know, more and more efficient, I, I look at it. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks, Emily. Go ahead, Chris.
So I have another question on the solar projects. Last year's budget had a line item of about a quarter million dollars, which I believe NPS refunded back to the city for renewable, the purchase of renewable, renewable energy credits. If I recall, that was specifically tied to our solar projects and the delay in some of those solar projects. Is there an expectation of any similar line item in this year's budget?
So I need to get some more specific information. I do know that we had basically a, an amount. I didn't think it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Chris. So can I get back to you on?
It was, it was two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars was the actual line item, but it was, it included a couple of other things. And I believe during the course of the discussion, it was brought forth that the, the vast majority of that two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars was related to the purchase of renewable energy.
Okay. All right. Let me get back on that one. That's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Mayor Fuller, go ahead.
Can I also just say the obvious, which is that with the economic repercussions of the pandemic, we slowed down a lot of building projects, but we're able to move forward with the Newton Early Childhood Program and have kids in there, little ones in there right now. And using our debt capacity, are moving forward with the Lincoln Elliott Project. As we speak, with a lot of hard work from a lot of people. To be clear, countryside Franklin, Horseman, all require the residents and voters of Newton to allocate the funding for those projects to move them forward in the timeline that the memo indicates.
Thanks, Mayor Fuller. And thank you, Liam and Stephanie. I hope you feel better. Thanks for that update. Up next, we have a buffer zone update. Liam will stay. Katie Hoag is.
Katie's doing.
Data analysis and enrollment planning. Hi, Katie.
Hi, everybody.
So Katie has a presentation. She's again going to be key in this whole piece here for us. Go ahead, Katie.
All right. Let me just get this set up here. All right. So I'm, I'm here tonight to talk about a quick buffer zone update. I thought it would be helpful to start, whoops, why is it, sorry, jumping ahead here. I thought it would be helpful to start to make sure that everyone's on the same page to talk about what a buffer zone is and why we have them briefly. And then I'll talk about our current recommendation for this year. So a buffer zone in Newton is a residential area where the residents who live in that area are districted to more than one school. The district makes the determination of the school of enrollment for students who live in that area and attend Newton Public Schools. I think it's really important to point out that new buffer zones only apply to families who are new to the Newton Public Schools. And that new students to Newton Public Schools who already have siblings here will follow their siblings in terms of the schools in which they will be enrolled. So this new buffer zone really only applies to somebody or a family who is brand new to the Newton Public Schools. Once students are enrolled in a particular school who reside in a buffer zone, those students will follow their school of enrollment's feeder patterns for the secondary schools that they'll attend. So why do we have them in Newton? They help provide flexibility for us to balance enrollment across the district and between specific schools, which is especially helpful at the elementary school where we have fifteen different schools. We use them when we have concerns about building capacity and or class sizes in particular buildings. So tonight we're here to talk about Cabot. Based on the projected enrollment, we are projecting twenty-one sections of classes next year at Cabot. And the projected enrollment for Cabot results in class sizes that are higher than the district averages at every grade level. So this isn't necessarily a reason why we would consider changes to buffer zones in and of itself. But at Cabot, if enrollment ends up being higher than what we've projected, there's limited flexibility to increase the number of sections. In addition to that, Cabot has really high positive cohort survival ratios for all grade levels, especially at, for the cohorts going from kindergarten to grade one and from grade one to grade two. So we want to make sure that we can manage that incoming kindergarten size at Cabot to ensure that it remains at four sections through elementary school and doesn't grow so large that we would need five sections. This slide is showing the current Cabot District in blue, as well as its current buffer zones. So at the top of the map, you can see there's a, a blue section with pink lines. That's the current Cabot Horseman buffer zone. On the eastern side of the Cabot District with green hashtag lines is the current Cabot in Underwood Buffer. And then on the west side is the current Cabot in Pierce Buffer with blue hashtag lines or hash lines. So our current recommendation for Cabot is to expand the existing buffer with Horseman to include all of the Cabot District above the Pike. And I'll show a slide with this map in a minute. This section, this new expanded section has an average of six elementary school students per year who reside there and enroll in the Newton Public Schools. Expanding this buffer would not create any changes for transportation. And students in this expanded zone would feed today whether they attend Horseman or Cabot. Finally, Horseman has projected capacity in all grade levels for students except in grade four. And typically we see the majority of our incoming students who live in buffer zones in grades kindergarten and one. This map is showing the recommended expansion for this buffer zone. So the current buffer is at the top of the map here. And then the recommended expansion is outlined in blue. So it covers the whole section of the Cabot District above the Pike here. So we are requesting a vote on these recommendations at the next school committee, which isn't until March first because of the February vacation. And we're asking for this vote at the next meeting so that we can provide this information to inter, incoming kindergarten families and any other families who are new to the Newton Public Schools as soon as possible, so that people have that information when they register. So that is all I have for my presentation. We're happy to take questions. Now I'll, I can leave or I can put up the map if that would be helpful, if we have any questions as well.
Thanks, Katie. Any questions from the members? Chris, go ahead.
So if I recall going through the, the very recent Cabot Bigelow split. Bigelow split with Lincoln Elliott, the, that triangle above the Pike was only added to the Cabot District back when Cabot expanded. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I guess would, would this have impacted the, you know, how we were conceiving the two options of districting into Bigelow?
So my sense is it wouldn't have impacted that, Chris. This area above the Pike, I don't think we would have ever had. I don't think we would have suggested them moving to a different, they're so close to the day middle school. So this in particular area, I don't think that we would have thought about switching or swapping those ones out. So again, our map that we had done, it was all south of the Pike.
Okay, I couldn't remember. So the, in the, in the swap scenario, that triangle was going to remain going today?
Yes.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, I think just some additional context that we put in there is that when we had designed Cabot at the time, the, the decision to not move in full district-wide special education program had not been made. And we had expanded Cabot intentionally to get that enrollment that we could take. And then to this decision, and again, this was the right decision to make. Essentially, we have some, some spaces, two classrooms that were now dedicated to special education programming. Some, some ways, we expanded that almost a little larger than we should have, given that we had these two district-wide programs. And as we do new buildings going forward, each of those is going to have typically two dedicated special education classrooms, but we'll think about our enrollment. So that's why I think we find ourselves just a little bit in this pinch, just to be as open as, that's my understanding of how that came about and why we expanded that district in the first place.
To the extent that, you know, Horace Mann is expanded and renovated, how will that impact this, that little triangle?
So Horace Mann capacity of, you know, I think the current plan, again, it's going to grow that building. I think it'll be likely an 18-section building. I think that would give them enrollment figures up in that, that, that 4, 396 to 414 range. I don't, I may have, I may have the book behind me. Their enrollment stays still, I mean, this is, we're talking, you know, five or six students, I think, per year coming from this buffer zone area. Katie, I don't know if you've got any of the Horace Mann numbers, but they're, they still stay, certainly stay below that, that 396, 414.
Yeah, we're projecting Horace Mann to actually decline over the next five years to about 330 students without any changes, without the change that we're requesting tonight.
Sorry, would you envision this remaining a buffer zone or would you envision a redistricting back to Horace Mann?
Go ahead, Liam.
I was just saying, right now, the recommendation is a buffer zone. So I think that as we think about Underwood Ward, as we think about a lot of the pieces as part of the study, I think we need to think a lot about a lot of different pieces in the district. But right now, this is certainly, this piece, I think, will help Cabot. I think that's the only school, again, our enrollment's going down. Yeah, Cabot is the only area that would, you know, up in the 400 still that we want to keep. And we just want to have that flexibility to make sure that we don't put, you know, either the sections or the class sizes to a point that it's, that, that, that the principal and the school has limited flexibility. But I do think that, you know, over time, we're going to have to look at a lot of different things in the district, Chris. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Alright, all set. Thank you very much, Liam. Appreciate it. Thanks, Katie.
Sure.
So up next, we have a system-wide goals update, fine arts presentation. This, we have Renee McCall, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Richard King, our Fine Arts Curriculum Coordinator for grades K through eight, Jeff Nodler, interim Fine Arts and Performing, fine and performing, that was tricky, Arts Department Chair for Newton South, and Todd Young, Fine and Performing Arts Department Chair for Newton North. Welcome, everyone. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just here to introduce Richard, Jeff, and Todd, who are going to give a status update on K through 12 arts. They will talk about the impact that COVID has had on the arts program, but also talk about the positive impact that it also has had on students. So with that, I will hand it over to Richard.
So our report tonight, some of it scripted and some of it will be able to speak off the cuff. But on behalf of Todd and Jeff and the 84 Fine and Performing Art Teachers K-12, we thank you for the opportunity to address this body to give a post-pandemic status report on Newton's Fine and Performing Arts Curricular and Extracurricular Programs. You received a comprehensive written report full of examples and artifacts that reflect the tremendous efforts of Newton's arts teachers and how they navigated these past three years with the utmost care and professionalism, along with their colleagues across disciplines and departments throughout the Newton Public Schools, of course. The very nature of this medical emergency that was COVID-19 pandemic hit the Fine and Performing Arts Departments where we live. We live in a community gatherings and performances that are built around being in close proximity, whether at an art reception, huddled in front of student artwork, or sitting, you know, in tight rows, a full-house performance for a theater or a music performance. Not to mention that performing arts rely on the forceful expulsion of breath energy in the form of dialogue, choral singing, brass, and wind performances. All of these joyful experiences rendered hazardous to your health under the COVID pandemic. And for arts teachers, that was just at first paralyzing. But in fact, we're here to celebrate the fact that the Newtons, in spite of these formidable constraints, the Newton Fine and Performing Arts Teachers responded with resilience, innovation, and collaboration to ensure that our students receive the best arts education possible under such dire circumstances. In our written report, we provide details on the challenges we confronted during the pandemic and the challenges that remain. We hope the report will serve as a basis for further actions and investments aimed at returning our finance department back to its full capacity and that we will continue to advance our arts programs to reach the exemplary status we are capable of. This evening, we will illuminate the ways in which the arts and arts teachers serve the district's goals. Academic excellence in the arts is buoyed by national and state standards. And in the fall of 2019, the new mass DESI art standards were released. And now they include a new fifth arts discipline of media arts. Educational equity is achieved in the arts through representation in curriculum whereby students of all backgrounds will see themselves and their heritages reflected among the diverse artists and artworks they experience in arts classes. We also provide access to the richness an arts education provides by ensuring all students can participate if they lack the means to pay fees or acquire resources such as musical instruments. Social emotional well-being is among the most admired attributes of an arts education. Generations of experience of arts teachers and innumerable testimonials of parents and students tell the story of how the arts helped shape or change a student's life in positive ways. Mostly, however, we will focus our attention on celebrating the heroic efforts of our music, theater, and visual art teachers for their perseverance during the pandemic and their continued dedication to the students in Newton. Turn it over to Todd Young.
We thought we'd take a moment simply to give a better understanding of who we are and where we come from. So to start, I want to share our collective belief that we believe in the arts, that all kids, all of our students have the capacity to learn. And that in the arts are not reserved for a small portion of kids. Not reserved for just those that we deem as talented or whatever we call them. In Newton, we respect and celebrate that the arts are available for all kids. From there, our curriculum is really based on a foundation of two equal parts. So you can imagine two parts that work together and support each other but must remain in balance. You can imagine almost like the scales of justice, where one supports the other and they keep each other in check. So the first is our commitment to excellence. And excellence simply means that we're doing everything we can possibly do within our classes, our exhibits, our stages, our performances, to bring out the finest that arts education has to offer. And that is true from our earliest students in the elementary schools all the way through the high schools. But we'd also argue that that access, that excellence is only good if along the way, there were equal access points for all of our kids. To have an excellent program for a very small portion of kids does not showcase a program that is rich. And I believe by keeping both of those, we believe by keeping both of those in check, that we're offering students the very best we can. And I have a very brief story to just illustrate it, and this is a true story. The year right before the pandemic, so three, four years ago, I guess, I was attending the All-State Music Conference in Boston. And I saw a colleague of mine, who's the K to 12 Performing Arts Director at a neighbor school of ours, a district that we often compare ourselves to. They have an excellent music program, among other things. And he and I were comparing notes, just catching up. We see each other once a year, sharing what's going on in our schools. And immediately at one point, I became a little envious of some of the things that he was sharing. And I started to allude to the fact that I was a little bit envious. And he stopped me, he paused, and he said the following. He said, Todd, he said, I can only wish that our district had the commitment to serve and support all kids like you all do in Newton. And I was very proud of that, not for me, but for all of us, as Richard said, 84 faculty members who are committed, supporting the excellence that we can possibly do, but only good if every student has access to it.
My name is Jeff Knadler. I am the Department Chair at South. Newton Arts provide countless opportunities for students to create, collaborate, and communicate with their voices or an instrument, with their acting or design skills, or their visual artistry and craftsmanship. When given the opportunity and support, Newton students succeed in the arts. Newton Schools send more than its share of musicians to the Massachusetts Music Educators Association, junior districts, senior districts, and all-state conferences. In fact, five of the 19 students in the All-State Jazz Ensemble are Newton students. The Newton South Jazz Ensemble and Jazz Combo were both selected for the National Mingus Jazz Festival in New York City. They are the only Massachusetts groups chosen. At North, teachers have started a rock program that just had its first concert with 13 groups of student musicians, most of whom had not been a part of the school music scene before. Our theater programs frequently perform for sold-out houses with diverse offerings and are often directed by and designed by our students. Our middle school theater programs compete at high levels in the METG One Act Play Festivals. And our visual artists consistently receive top marks in AP Studio and AP 3D in Art and Design. They create sophisticated portfolios that put a cap on the learning they started in the foundational elementary school art classes. But it's not just about awards and the end results. The arts are where students learn so-called soft skills and social emotional learning that will help them succeed wherever life takes them. Our art, music, and theater programs have also had a profound impact on the students' daily lives. Since the pandemic and up until now, it's clear how the arts are a lifeline for the students in our schools. It gives them confidence to pursue their passions and the courage to express themselves in new and innovative ways. Arts students are better equipped to think creatively, creatively, and to problem solve, skills that will serve them well in whatever they choose to do.
So we're going to just quickly go back briefly and revisit that week of March 9th in 2020 just to kind of highlight some of the, the, the responses that teachers were able to, to give in that emergency. And then over the past couple of years, ways in which they continued to, to work to support the needs of students in unusual circumstances, to say the least. In, in the mark, week of March 9th, 2020, you know, that time of year, the finance department was really humming along. March is sort of that time of the year when we're just coming off of winter concerts. I think we had our winter art reception here and a lot of excitement to look forward to what's happening in the rest of the year. We had high school students preparing for All-State, the All-State Music Festival, you know, to be members, select members from Newton to join students from around the state. We had, we had drama and performance ensembles that were really ramping up for Tech Week and Opening Night. We had a show that the fifth grade saw and for the matinee performance, but they didn't have the performance for parents and, and, and family and friends. We had one elementary music teacher who was just launching a school-wide initiative to write a school song, something that that school had wanted to, to accomplish for, for a number of years. And personally, on, on March 13th, a team from Memorial Spalding and myself and the principal, we were sending an art teacher, a second-grade teacher, and the Metco counselor off to open a symposium at Leslie University on integrating the arts into the classroom. And for those of you who don't know, for the, for well over a decade, Memorial Spalding has been able to generate an arts-integrated focus K to five. It's some really exciting work that is owned by that entire school community. We were very, we were flying high. We were, this shirt and tie is my first, this is what I bought, this is the outfit I had for that symposium. So three years later, I'm finally able to wear it. Glad it still fits. All educators in Newton responded swiftly to this emergency. And for arts teachers thrust into the largely unfamiliar world of virtual education and supporting students in their homes and not in their classrooms, Fine and Performing Arts Teachers responded by adapting quickly to develop new technology skills and implement new teaching modalities. Meeting the students' needs became paramount. By the end of March in that, in 2020, over, over 200 emergency art kits were given out with meals by the end of March. And the Fine and Performing Arts Teachers leveraged arts education software and applications to present virtual performances and student art shows and just really teach out of their element, far from their classrooms and their resources. As we moved into the second and third year of the pandemic and the arts were still constrained by virtual instruction and performance, especially at the elementary level, teachers continued to innovate and adapt while virtual delivery of arts instruction had extended into the elementary schools throughout last year. Some examples that teachers were able to respond, the elementary visual art teachers adapted a sketchbook initiative for each child to maintain an art-making portfolio. So successful was that, that many art teachers are continuing to keep sketchbooks now in their classroom. And, you know, I look over the shoulder of students all the time and it's a wonderful outlet for them. And, and it's theirs. It's very personal. Our, our elementary instrumental music teachers continued to engage students through virtual lessons and ensembles. It's not ideal, but for the student, so those years were very challenging for students. We did see enrollment drop a little bit and I'm happy to say numbers are back up. Returning to the 21, 22 school year, elementary music teachers devised a new alternate curriculum for fourth and fifth grade chorus, resulting in a ukulele initiative now taking place at all the, all the elementary schools. Generously funded by the Newton Schools Foundation and with COVID funds, these teachers quickly adapted and created a lasting experience. And now we're, we're blessed to have this classroom resource, a very accessible instrument in the elementary classroom. So, you know, out of some bad comes good. And those are just a few of the examples that we wanted to highlight.
Like I say, similarly, between the two high schools, the art programs were making kits by the hundreds to send home. And I remember distinct memories of seeing outside the ceramics room, a place where kids could come. um, a place where kids could come and receive clay, take it home to hand mold it, and then return it to another box where the teachers would then fire it overnight and return it to the student so that then they could glaze it, return it to that box, and then they would fire it again. So there was just this incredible outreach and that happened all across the, the visual arts. Music created all these wonderful online um, areas to communicate musically together and not just submit individual things, but have students work creatively together. Um, really, really hard, as as Richard said early on, particularly in chorus, where the one thing that you do is absolutely shut down and shut down for a long time. Um, really creative ideas to keep going. In theater, at Newton South, they created their, a whole film. At North, they had all sorts of online um, productions. And I will forever remember our colleague, uh, Jay Zawaki, uh, who does some technical theater at at North. They built a full stage outside in the Walnut Street parking lot during the hybrid time. And I'll remember him hanging from the solar panel trussels, trusses, we did have permission from the city to do that, but to hang lights. And we had a full production outside and with the South Film and whatnot. The theater programs are really models of of ways to to keep these programs going.
So uh, the last thing I'll say about the K to A experience, now that we're uh, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, the elementary and middle school art teachers are mostly back to their typical programs uh, with limited impact from the ongoing concern over COVID nineteen, other than the noticeable setback in content skill development due to the pandemic. Um, students are resilient and their desire to re-engage with the arts programs is strong. Enrollments are up in fourth through sixth grade ensemble music despite the absence of the feeder experience in choral and instrumental music in fourth and fifth grades. So basically, the students have a desire and the enrollments spiked, but the sixth grade experience this year was really addressing some of the skills they would have learned in fourth and fifth grade, but they're catching up quickly. Um, I I was so excited. I was at, I've been at a number of the winter performances to be at the Day Middle School for their production of Spam a Lot with over a hundred students involved in the production and a full house, you know, I mean, there were some people wearing masks, but getting back to to what these experiences are are supposed to be. Uh, we will acknowledge that one ancillary impact of the pandemic on fine and performing arts teachers is that they benefited from the necessity of educational technology and the infusion of one-to-one devices for students as a means for addressing the new arts discipline of media arts. So we're hopeful we can expand on that. That work is already happening in middle school visual art classrooms where they have class packs of iPads and they're generating digital art. Uh, but one middle school drama teacher uh, shared this anecdote that uh, her students really gained the technology skills during the pandemic. They did a production of Bye Bye Birdie where most of the students learned all of the technical skills needed to produce a virtual production of Bye Bye Birdie. Uh, she described um, how the students just learned a great deal in the process and how some students, this really kind of fed their their desire. Uh, and um, she would never like to repeat that again. I mean, you know, for all that it's worth, this is a sentiment shared by uh, by all of her colleagues. Yet, I I mentioned this fifth new arts discipline of media arts. I think the, the pandemic cracked the door for how arts teachers are gonna leverage technology and start to look at expanding uh, curriculum in that, in that area uh, in future years. Provided uh, things go well for the district uh, in the immediate term and in the long term with new leadership and uh, fiscal health and so forth that we're all hoping for, so. Todd's got the closing.
Yeah, so I, I actually, Jeff mentioned one line earlier, which I think, to me at least, really sums up um, uh, what, what is so incredibly important about these arts programs, art, music, theater, and beyond, is that they really truly are a lifeline for so many kids. Um, and that's not just true through the pandemic. It's true now. It is the place that really addresses, or a place that certainly really addresses their so- social emotional well-being. And in a very real way, and I see this more than ever, and I've been in Newton now fifteen years, is their connectedness, connectedness to school is very much through their arts programs. In other programs, obviously, but in in what we see, it's that place where this is the reason I come, this is where I get fed, and this is where I feel good.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Um, before we dive in, I'm going to remind everyone that we are um, to keep their comments kind of structured and concise so that we can um, get through a pretty packed agenda. But I'm gonna remind myself of that because I wanted to start by thanking you gentlemen so very much uh, for reminding us how far we've come. Uh, Richard, I, your outfit from that time in twenty twenty, uh, I'm sure it sometimes gives you PTSD. I know that that March month gives me some as well. But um, something Todd said really resonated with me that I wanna lift up. You said that there are um, two parts that must be kept in balance. And you were talking about the, that excellence is only good if there is equal access points for our kids. And I think far too often, all that we're hearing about is that one-sided part of it that says academic excellence and ac- academic rigor is the only thing that matters. And we need to get back to the fundamentals of of teaching kids so that they can uh, be academically uh, proficient, that they can have, you know, good grades and all of that. But you taught, touched on the essential kind of co-mingling of both of those things as required to make sure that the kids are learning. And as a parent, I have to tell you, in the fine arts space, I uh, got to witness um, our Day Middle School choral program. Um, and Dr. Smith has done such amazing work with the students and picking up on this piece about accessing the curriculum. When I see the sixth and the seventh grade uh, chorus singing Lift Every Voice and Sing, the Black National Anthem, and that everyone is included and learns about why that's so impactful. And then I, I see my daughter proudly singing the song with her peers. It's just an amazing reminder that no matter who you are, you have a home in this program. And I think it's just, it it's one of the most lovely things that I think you said, and I I really appreciate that. So that wasn't at all concise, but to the other members, to do be concise. Any questions or comments? And also from our student, yes. Uh, why don't you start, Helen?
I was just thinking, um, I have a message that I wanna relay for Heruka. Unfortunately, she can't be here right now. But she basically said that, um, I'm in the orchestra at Newt North, and it has definitely been one of the best parts of my high school experience, even when it was on Zoom and it was basically impossible to rehearse as a group, given the audio and lagging issues. And at every concert she's had at North since returning from COVID, she's felt an increase in their, in her sense of community and bonding each time. And what she loves especially about the music program is that there's all sorts of skill ranges and skill levels and interest levels, but they all come together to put on a performance. And she says that she's been able to meet people that she wouldn't have otherwise met through orchestra, and she's really grateful for experience as part of the musical.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Helen, and thanks Haruka for the original comment. Uh, any questions or comments from the members? Go ahead, Rajiv, and then Emily, and then Kathy.
So, uh, thank you. This was great. Couple of things, just um, as a personal thank you. My um, Dr. Smith was incredible. A, a very inclusive person. He brought my son, a special needs student, into the chorus, treated him like one of the other students. Incredible. Um, the, the choir at North, I forget the name of the teacher, but he ran it over Zoom. The students were on, they were singing, they were getting a break from the challenges of of being separated from everyone else. So, thank you.
Thanks, Rajiv. Go ahead, Emily, and then Kathy.
Um, I too, I want a second. The, the thank you is all around. I think uh, what you do is so uh, incredibly critically important. Theater kid here, performer, so I totally get it. I was one of those. Um, so thank you. Um, and I think it's uh, long overdue that we had this presentation to really shine a light on what's happening in the arts in the city. Cause you know, we always focus on the core academics. I think that you said it quite beautifully, Tamika, so I don't need to rehash it. Um, so thank you for that. Um, the ukulele choice was really inspired. That's a skill that those kids are gonna take for the rest of their lives. So that was amazing. Um, and I'm also glad to hear about media arts. I was sad when Carol retired uh, and happy to know that media arts is continuing, I know, in the high school, but also in the middle school, um, which is wonderful. So you talked about um, right at the beginning, something that really resonated with me, which is um, the arts being accessible to all students. And um, I'm wondering if you can give some examples, especially on the high school level of, of how that works? How does that work in the high school level?
Uh, say, one way is, uh, if we're talking music, for example, cause that's a good, a very clear way I see it, at least. At both schools, if you have an auditioned ensemble, we have a commensurate ensemble that's open for anyone, that same thing. So if there's an honors level jazz ensemble that's auditioned, there's a jazz uh, class that anyone can sign up and have access to the curriculum. And that's really true all the way. I mean, Jeff's our theater ass, uh, expert here, but I know that's true on both sides of the city.
I can talk about South Music as well. Uh, one of the, one of the parts that I really enjoy uh, when I'm able to be in the classroom is Mr. Youngman's music production classes, uh, where uh, again, any, any student can sign up for those. Uh, and students learn uh, song composition, um, music production, music tech. Um, and these are, these are students who don't necessarily have a, you know, a six-year uh, history on an instrument. They come to high school without any, uh, without any uh, musical background in terms of playing an instrument or singing. Uh, and they can come to this class and, and create beats and create their own music. Um, learn about world music and how that can, that can um, uh, influence their uh, music. Um, so there's a, like, like Todd said, there's a lot of entry points and access points. Um, we started last year at Newton South Unified Theater, um, which is a uh, group that meets uh, eh, during lion blocks. Um, we mix um, general ed students with special ed students um, on, in acting games, theater games, uh, and then in the spring, we have a, a show that we produce during the school day that includes all students of all abilities um, in that show. And it's a, it's great fun. Um, and we hope to do that again uh, this year. Uh, I hear that we do have a title uh, chosen, but I won't let it slip here.
Thank you so much. I'm, I'm very happy about the Unified Theater Program. I think that's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Go ahead, Kathy, and then Cove, and then I'm pink.
So I just, I wanted to add my thanks as well. Um, so the experience my kids are having right now in the middle school level, I think sort of touches on what Emily said. I have a kid involved in um, in a spring musical production. And I think one of the things that I like most about it is my understanding that is that everybody who auditioned for the musical has some role in it. And so I think just the welcoming that that creates and giving those kids an opportunity to do something school-related after school. A bunch of those kids may not be theater people, but it's a group of students who get together and they're really excited about doing it. And so I just, not only are the teachers who are running the program fabulous, but just the opportunity for that kind of after-school exposure to something, and it happens to be the arts, but it's a great program. And I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Kathy, go ahead, Cove.
Yeah, I just wanted to say um, thank you as well. Um, I do think the ukulele is an inspired choice, although I do think there's a whole generation of parents that aren't gonna experience the recorder and they really should. I, oh, okay. I experienced recorder during COVID. Um, yeah. Um, and uh, but, but more seriously, during COVID, the art class with Missy, we were at Memorial Spalding. The art class with Missy was um, was a lifeline for my kid. Um, he was the only one allowed to use a hot glue gun and a small saw. But uh, she knew I was there. Um, and I just think, I wonder about the integrated arts program because I know that at the time she was trying to expand that, I think it's an incredibly powerful program to um, you know, I'm very interested as an educator and as a parent in how you um, build real experiences for kids. Um, and the way that they did that through those, those units, and I'm thinking in particular, of course, with the third grade one where they write papers, they visit the art museum, they recreate the art. I mean, it's just, it's truly like one of the best um, projects I've ever seen done and was so, was such a part of the whole experience at Memorial Spalding, something that kids worked up to. Um, and I, I don't know, I guess my question is, are you still trying to expand the arts integration program across the other elementary schools? Or is that a victim of COVID?
As a fine arts coordinator, I would love to see more concerted efforts to offer integrated strategy. There's a lot that is required at the school level to do that. One is, uh, in this case, uh, Mrs. E, Mrs. Eskovich, you know, she has her master's degree in integrated strategy. So arts educators have their specific passions and specialties. Um, and that just happens to be hers, but she also had the ability to enlist and uh, persuade her classroom colleagues to see uh, the efficacy of integrated strategies. In fact, at one point, a third-grade teacher talked about, you know, we were understanding why they were doing this. And she said, well, we love Mrs. E, uh, but we wouldn't be able to take time away from teaching our science lessons and our writing lessons through arts-integrated strategies if we didn't see that it had value, that it, that it uh, engaged students at a higher level. So it really takes a classroom, teachers, and a principal, and an art or a music teacher to spearhead this. And I think, you know, at the time she was getting ready to present at a symposium, there was a movement afoot to try to bring some professional development into the district. So obviously, everything kind of came to a screeching halt. When do we get back to exploring arts-integrated strategies at the elementary level? There are many things that have to happen before we can even have that conversation. And I think the first order of business is trying to ensure that we uh, can return next year to a, to a fully-funded school system to start to explore ways in which we could advance not just uh, arts programming, but across disciplines. There's a lot of desires, a lot of creative thinking, and we're just hampered right now by the current uh, situation we find ourselves in coming out of a pandemic and looking at a fiscal challenge that are great, so.
Well, I'd just like to echo my colleagues', uh, um, uh, congratulation and uh, um, you know, um, shout out to you guys and to eighty-four teachers. I want to say that clearly, eighty-four teachers made these programs so successful. I can think of my two kids who both love the singing and, you know, um, especially my daughter and um, and, you know, playing some music instrument uh, at Horseman. She was the, uh, what's the word? She played the piano when they're singing and when she had to stop. And I know the musical teacher was really, really disappointed. And probably we made a wrong decision. She was busy with gymnastics she doing. But anyway, um, I'm saying that is important. Um, one's quick story. And I remember the best theater experience was at Newton North uh, watching the uh, theater at the roof. And I, I hope I'm not offending anybody else, but that experience really stayed in my mind. Sitting so close to the stage in the middle of that and enjoying this experience be- because, you know, came from China, did not have a lot of experience going to theater to enjoying those uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, shows. But that experience and students' performance was so wonderful. I could not believe that. And I, I hope I will still have, now after COVID, three, four years, we forgot that. Now I remind myself, I probably should check the schedule to see if any performance come on. And probably May I can put on the newsletter and some, you know, big show because students, you see, they really spend time to prepare for this show. So I hope the more people will go there to support and enjoy. So, okay, I said enough, but uh.
And Anything Goes is coming up, but that I know.
Uh, I, I hopefully I will not miss this time. Thanks.
Thanks, Anping. Go ahead, Kathy.
Well, thank you, Tamika. Um, it has been such a joy to be in Newton and to, I can remember walking through uh, a
And to, I can remember walking through a back door at Newton North High School and seeing, oh, I don't know, the poster stood high with all of the productions that were going to be happening this year. And to hear you talk about the inclusive nature or to sit here with school committee members as parents, you know, telling you how important it is when you talk about a well-rounded education. You talked about the frameworks which are continually being updated. And I, I am so pleased that the focus is on making sure that you have a well-rounded education. I do have to tell you, I chuckle, I just had written a note to myself. So, Aunt Ping, you just mentioned it was Fiddler on the Roof. So, I looked at that picture and my note here to myself was, wow, Fiddler on the Roof. In nineteen seventy-three, and that is fifty years ago, right now, I performed in Fiddler on the Roof. I wasn't sure if that's what it was, but anyway, just want to share.
Thanks Kathy. And a, a final plug for, or not plug, but a final nod for you gentlemen and your fine arts and fine and performing arts educators throughout the district is I don't think we can appreciate how brave your educators truly are and kind of seamlessly so. A lot of our educators and we've heard presentations to the school committee struggle with facing, you know, some of the more challenging or, or difficult conversations around race and religion and ethnicity and gender. But I find, and my colleagues can certainly have a different perspective, but I find that our theater and arts educators, you do that so seamlessly. In one evening performance at the day middle school, as I mentioned earlier, we heard a, a seamless kind of ex- exploration of why lift every voice and sing is, is important. And, and that wasn't just students of color who were giving that message and talking about the importance of it. There was a number of their peers. We heard a song that referred to gender and they, the kids explained why the male pronoun he in the song is out of date with today and how there's a spectrum of genders. And it was awesome as a parent to see this as being something that was woven into the curriculum. And when I say that your educators are brave, that's exactly what I mean. So, appreciate that, appreciate you and appreciate all of your work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. So, we will continue on to our next topic, which is a system-wide goals update with our interventionists. We have a bit of a transition. Aisha Farag, our Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education is here with Orla Higgins-Avril, our Ainger Elementary Principal. And a number of her team as well. Welcome everyone. We can also, Cove, we can also repurpose that microphone over there.
I'm just going to stand here and then take my seat. It is such a pleasure to welcome Orla Higgins-Avril, Principal of the Ainger Elementary School and a team of educators from Ainger to present tonight and share more about the ways in which education is really a team sport. Some of you have heard me say that before and over the course of the last couple of years, we've had a number of different opportunities to highlight the numbers of positions, the ways in which our schools today have positions that perhaps aren't familiar to many people in the community because of the ways in which education has shifted and changed. And the ways in which we make it a point to work together in our schools to make sure that students receive the kind of support that they need. That for every school, we are creating schools of joy, we're creating schools of belonging, schools of engagement and schools of challenge. And so, what we'll do today, I'm going to turn things over to Orla to introduce the team and talk more about what that looks like in one elementary school. It's important to note that Orla represents a team, Orla and her team represents the work and the focus of the fifteen elementary schools. And that while some of our systems might differ a bit, or some of the meeting structure, structures or things that you'll hear about tonight may differ slightly, or buildings may be in different places in their development. This is the ongoing work and focus of our team. So, I'm going to turn things over to Orla and the team.
Okay, thank you Aisha. And just, just to kind of follow on Richard and his team. What we're going to talk about a little tonight is like almost like an orchestra of just how we all work together, you know, playing on the fine arts. Making a segue here. Anyway, I'm Orla, I'm the Principal of Ainger. I'm here with my team who'll introduce themselves.
And Megan, Cam, the literacy specialist.
Edgar Wigder, a second grade teacher.
I'm Maria Colby, social emotional learning coach.
Kaitlyn Fetter, the instructional math coach.
And so, like Aisha said, we're going to talk to you today about how we provide student support to all students at the elementary level. And again, while we're talking about Ainger, this really represents the work of the elementary schools. I'm putting up a slide that looks very busy and I'm not going to go through this bullet by bullet. But what this really shows is the way we organize our schools as a multi-tiered system of support. That's what MTSS stands for. I think you're all familiar with that acronym. And we refer to this visual all the time. It sort of looks at, in the green column, what all children receive. And then in the yellow and red columns are our tiered support, which are for some of our students and are like flexibly provided based on data. And we'll talk about that as we go on. And we have some things listed under there, but also to note that the tier two, tier three support is often like similar to the tier one instruction, but it's provided at a different pace or intensity or frequency and with a different student teacher ratio. So, there's a whole host of things that we do for students. So, the biggest piece is obviously our students and they're at the core and center of what we do. So, when we meet as PLCs, our professional learning communities, we meet weekly, which is imperative to the work that we do. During those meetings, we're looking at our student data constantly to look at what interventions we might need to provide for students at all different levels. And at those meetings, we might invite like Megan or Kaitlyn or Maria to our team meetings to kind of dive into that data a little deeper. And we might decide that we need to provide some interventions for some students. And we might provide that intervention for six to eight weeks. And then we kind of come back to our PLC team and decide, is it working? Is it not working? And if it's not working, we then might move to our student intervention team, which is our sit team. And during that team meeting, there's more specialists, Orla's involved in that, our school psychologist is involved in that. We have other providers that could help these students. And at that time, we might look at other interventions that we can put into place. Or we might decide maybe the student has kind of maxed out on some of those interventions and maybe we need to look at testing for special ed. And then the final piece is our MTSS Steering Committee, which meets every week. And on that team are a bunch of us, ELL, school psychologist, social worker. And in those meetings, and then there's also classroom teachers. So, we rotate. So, we have K-one together and then two, three, and then four, five together, and it goes on a rotating schedule. And during that time, we're kind of looking at whole school data, so looking at trends, achievement gaps, lots of, lots of data all the time. And looking to make some decisions about our processes that we have.
And so, just to kind of show you, like Edgar did a nice job describing this. But what, what the process that we use in any of our meetings, but really the heart of the, the heart of the work is at those professional learning communities on Wednesday afternoons when teachers get to meet together. And they use the data to determine what the concern is, what we want our students to learn, develop the plan, implement the plan. And then, you know, come back again at a certain amount of time and evaluate, did this work? Was the work what we expected? And we're always looking at these kinds of questions, which is what do we want all of our students to know and be able to do? How do we know if they're feeling affirmed and engaged? What are some potential barriers to their learning that we can eliminate in universal design? And even thinking about the assessment, how we're universally designing assessments so that students have a lot of opportunities to show what they know. And then also thinking about challenge for students who are showing us that they're already proficient or are performing above grade level benchmarks. So, those are the questions that were always, that kind of like are at the center as we're thinking about this problem-solving process. And just a little visual of our team of interventionists, we're represented here by a few of them tonight. But there is a whole host of folks that are a little bit behind the scenes. They're not classroom teachers, but the support personnel in literacy, math and social emotional learning.
So, I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically about what we do and how we do it. The first two columns up there, providing interventions and collaborating with teachers really go hand in hand. And it's kind of this back and forth, like the cycle that Orla was just talking about. So, in the beginning of the year, we're assessing students, we're doing some screeners. And so, these, our teams will help support teachers with administering the assessment. Then we're meeting to look at the data and determining which students would benefit from interventions. What types of interventions would be most beneficial? Our most intensive interventions are for students in K to two, who are flagged for being at risk for developing a disability. And so, those are the students that were, that, that, especially for literacy, get the bulk of our time. And we're just kind of repeating that cycle where we're just kind of doing this sixty-eight week cycle and then checking to see progress and then adjusting interventions as needed. Some of those students, especially at the beginning of the year, they just had a little regression over the summer. They just are right back on track after that intervention, exiting students, bringing in new students. So, it's this constant cycle that's going on. And then the other piece, the coaching aspect of our role with the collaboration with teachers, our meeting on those Wednesday afternoon PLCs. So, not only look at data and talk about interventions, but preview curriculum, talking about best practices for those units that are coming up, just really supporting them with their tier one instruction in the classrooms. And to do all of this successfully in a way that effectively meets all students' needs, there's these essential components. And the first two are really just having the time for the interventions and for the planning and progress monitoring. So, the first bullet up there is grade level intervention blocks. And at Ainger, we have in all grades, four days a week, there's a designated intervention block. So, that is the time where there's no new instruction going on and that's when the interventions, that's our sort of first choice when interventions would happen from all of our teams. And then in addition to classroom teachers doing some interventions in the classroom. So, we have that time built into our master's schedule. And then the other piece of the time is time to collaborate as, you know, with, with grade level teachers on those Wednesday afternoons during PLCs. Those are really key to, you know, we make, you know, we get, have a nice rotation that's put in place. So, we know there's a regular touch point for us to really dig deep on the progress monitoring that's been done, what's happening in the classroom, making sure the interventions that are in place are meeting the students' needs and checking on their progress. And then the other essential component that I'll highlight is just the support of our interventionists. So, Kaitlyn, Maria and I are sort of intervention slash coaches. So, we really need the additional support of our interventionists to provide the number of interventions that we can because obviously scheduling can be challenging. We have those intervention blocks, but it's great. And literacy at Ainger, we have an interventionist and two aides. So, then we can provide more interventions to more students.
So, we wanted to share some more specifics and what this can look like, especially for our highest need students. So, I'm going to talk about the SEL example here. So, a student, a tier three student for SEL might be a student that's exhibiting significant, is experiencing significant dysregulation that looks like a very big disruptive behavior. So, a student that is showing us that, that is detached from their classroom, that is detached from their peers at the moment. What would that support look like from us? So, what it would look like is having a positive behavior support plan that they co-create with us. And this is something that takes additional time, but is really critical to the student really making progress over time is them picking those goals with us and having that, that agency around what their goals are. Once we have those goals of what those targets are for the student, that student, because those are lagging skills, the way we, that student will need explicit instruction, the same way they would need instruction if it was an ELA skill or if it was a math skill. So, there's one-to-one adult support to provide that explicit teaching and coaching. And then additionally, there's a push-in support to help them generalize that skill across the day. Also, for our students that are exhibiting this level of high need, there is a co-teaching lesson element where I'm going into the classroom and co-teaching an SEL lesson with the classroom teacher. So, if the student's skill is using their toolbox, toolbox of strategies when they're frustrated, where I'm doing a lesson with the teacher on strategy use in general, it's something that's good for all students, of course, to work on. But something that's critical for that student that's really struggling at the moment. And then we're meeting at, at least a bi-weekly basis, usually more as a team to really look at how the student is doing, looking at that progress monitoring data, getting voice from the student and the family. And these are students, you know, I'm so proud of our tier three work that we do with our students for social emotional learning. The need is greater than I've certainly ever experienced in my time in Newton. And, but I can say really confidently, when we have those five things in place, our students make tremendous gains and might only be considered a tier, a tier three SEL student for two, two or three weeks. And then we're able to step them down for support. So, it's about this really big infusion of support, this kind of wraparound that's required. And then we are able to then fade back when we see those gains.
And I'm going to talk about a tier three, an example of a tier three student in ELA. And just like Maria said, this might be a student who was receiving more of a tier two intervention, less often in a larger group and wasn't making the progress we wanted. So, we're going to make it a little bit more intensive by having it be one-to-one or in a very small group, five days a week. And with those youngest students in grades K to two, again, we're using a structured literacy routine that's systematic, systematic, and there's explicit instruction. And then those providing the intervention are doing that weekly progress monitoring. And then every few weeks, checking in with the classroom teacher, comparing notes and making sure that this specific intervention that we have going on is getting, is moving the students in the right direction. So, this is some data that we put together from last year that we're very proud of. And we wanted to sort of highlight the successes that we had, especially in grades K to two. So, when we're really thoughtful and targeted with our interventions, it leads to more students meeting end-of-year benchmarks and then fewer students being referred for special education testing. And so, in first and second grade, you can see eighty-five percent or more of the students that we serviced met the end-of-year benchmarks. And the few that didn't were tested and put on IEP. So, again, being really purposeful with our interventions really helps us delineate, you know, is there a disability that's preventing the student from making progress? Or did they just need this infusion of very targeted instruction to reach those end-of-benchmark or end-of-year benchmarks? And the screener we use in kindergarten is called Early Bird, and that's something that was just piloted last year for the first time. So, we were able to get started earlier last year than ever before with kindergarten interventions. And so, sixteen students received intervention. And those might, some of those students might have just been, you know, for the six or eight week cycle. But at the end of last year, we didn't refer any kindergarten students for testing because everyone was making that progress that we expected. And then we just thought it might be nice to just share some words from a student who is, receives tier three intervention. He's a, a third grade student, new to Newton Public Schools this year. And he gets intervention around spelling and reading. Yeah, it's just thirty-five seconds. He's very enthusiastic about his growth. Oh, and then this is data from this current school year. Oh, and then this is data from this current school year. Um so we use the um iReady diagnostic uh screener in beginning of the year, middle year, end of year in grades one through five. So the top bar is our literacy data from the diagnostic we just did. And then the second bar below that is the one from the fall. So we feel really good about the progress that's been made. And then below that are two uh subgroups where we tend to see an achievement gap. And we're also feeling very good to share about the solid progress with those subgroups as well.
So just like in SEL and literacy, we're also constantly collecting and looking at data from our students and how they're responding to tier one instruction in math. So these are just two visuals to show uh what that looks like. And so there are specific data points throughout the year where teachers are looking at a specific assessment from the curriculum and using a specific scoring guide to think about whether the student demonstrated that they were meeting, partially meeting or not meeting the standard. And that happens periodically throughout the year. And this is data that we are frequently looking at at that Wednesday PLC time when I'm visiting or when I'm visiting um that grade level at a different time to really look at student progress, to think about how they're responding to tier one and to think about how they're doing over time. What we're thinking about in particular in terms of intervention of those students that are not meeting certain benchmarks, so any of those reds are telling us that the student is not yet meeting a specific benchmark for that grade level in math. And that second um spreadsheet, they get pulled over there and we're really thinking about those students thinking more together about why they didn't meet that benchmark, doing a little bit more conversation about the student as a whole, thinking about SEL and literacy and how that um plays a role in their performance in math. And then from there, thinking about what kind of interventions or supports we couldn't put in place to help them make progress and hopefully as a goal ultimately meet that grade level benchmark. So we're using these universal screenings to monitor our student progress, to think about that tier one instruction and make plans for our students who are not yet meeting benchmarks to help them continue to make that progress towards grade level benchmarks.
And I know we're not talking about really special education too much in this um presentation tonight, but I wanted to highlight on the subject of data. Last year, as Megan was saying, um and and Edra talked about our student intervention team, which is the place in our school where we would make a referral to special education testing. Um and last year we referred ten children, um which you know, I don't know, that that's a very small number of students being referred. I was a school psychologist before I became a principal, so I was heavily involved in special education testing, et cetera. Ten is two percent of our popular, two, two and a half percent maybe of our population. And all ten of those students were found eligible. Again, oftentimes you'll see many students getting referred, then going through the lengthy testing process and not always being found eligible. Um and then kind of getting, you know, it's just, so I we wanted to highlight that data point for you. We are feeling really good about our targeted intervention in terms of minimizing unnecessary referrals to special education and resulting in more appropriate referrals and actually just looking back on the data over time, when I started in Ainger in twenty fourteen, I recall like being sort of struck by, we had um a special education rate in the building of over twenty percent. Um and now we're at about sixteen percent. You know, and this is after a pandemic and whatnot. And so I do think that a lot of our systems that that we've really focused in on over the last number of years, um we're we're seeing results in a lot of different places, including in this data point as well.
I can certainly. So um is it on yours? So it's like one of the slides maybe got deleted, but I can just give a really brief overview of the SEL data um that we have, which again is harder to kind of do a pinpoint quantitative data point for well-being, right? Like how do we really capture this in one data point? But our quantitative data that we do have is very exciting. Um and we updated the slide a little bit from what we shared before, just to be a little clear, but our quantitative data points from this year do come from a universal screener. We do use the universal screener at Ainger um that we did in mid-October and that we just did again last week. And so uh a few data points from that, our SEL interventionists have worked with twenty-nine regular education students uh from the beginning of the year till now. And seventy-three percent of those students went from having a score on our universal screener that where they were clinically at risk to not being clinically at risk. So that's a huge number and a huge shift. I think seventy-three percent of those students shifted from that clinically at risk based to not. Um additionally, we have a check-in checkout program that we use. It's an evidence-based tier-two intervention um system. And we had, uh it involves uh goal-setting with the student, teacher feedback in the classroom, and then mentoring from an adult in the building as well. So coming coming at skills from a few multiple areas. We have thirteen regular education students in that program this year. Uh three students exited by December, so made progress so quickly. They moved out of the program. And a hundred percent of our students have shown significant improvement in both classroom performance um and just engagement um in general. And then finally, I just another data point to share, we spend a lot of time progress monitoring in SEL as well as in academic domains and our whole SEL team, so our mental health team and SEL team, we've worked with sixty-seven for our sixty-seven students this school year uh to provide tier-two, tier-three interventions, so regular education students to provide those interventions. Um and that's eighteen percent of our student population who have received some level of SEL intervention support from our team this year.
So we're feeling very proud, obviously, of all of the great work that our team is doing and hopefully I know that slide got sent along because I'd love for you to take a look at it. Um lastly, Edra is going to talk about those students who are at benchmark or above benchmark and how it's with them.
Um so we're lucky that we have our interventionists and our math coach. Um because they are able to provide, when we've looked at our data and we've seen a group of students that are well above grade level, um we've had the opportunity, especially this year to have our interventionists meet with those groups of kids for um a thirty-minute block one time a week. Um which has been um a great experience for those children. They're working on um extended math skills, um they're looking at math reasoning, they're looking at problem solving and digging kind of deeper into problem-solving skills. Um and then in addition, we also are able to provide within our own classrooms, extension groups and extension um structures um within the regular math curriculum as well. Um and overall, our kids are having fun in math.
So um that's what we have figured. Thank you for asking any questions.
Thank you so much. Um I think we'll have a few questions for you, Kathy and then Poles and I'm Ping.
So thanks, Orla and everyone else. Um my question was really about, I want to sort of start where you ended. Um for the for those students who are getting extension opportunities, is that communicated to parents? Because I I feel like we collectively hear a lot about parents who think their children aren't being challenged. And so what I'm wondering is, is it and and we all know that our kids are not the best reporters to us of what goes on, but I guess I'm wondering how parents know about these kinds of things and sort of whether like when you do your parent-teacher conferences, do you talk about it? Because I feel like there may be a gap between what's being provided and what parents perceive and just how to address that.
Um we do, um I do. Um and I think yeah, all of our teachers at Ainger do. Um it's important for parents to know where their children are at and what supports they're getting, no matter what those supports are. Um so it might be communicated in email, by phone. Parent-teacher conferences are really where we talk about them a lot. Um so yes.
And we've also just been trying to be like, we we've, we hear that too. So as just as a school in general, we've been over the last couple of years, especially really trying to think about what work goes home to parents. So because it's like we could just send so many things and so just being thoughtful about what's going home, because that's also a communication tool of like what the children are doing in school and making that, just doing a little bit of calibration K to five in terms of the types of things and across the team and K to five so vertically in terms of what's going on.
And we we do a lot of conversations with the students because what they perceive as challenge is different from what we as teachers know is challenging to stretch and extend their thinking. So for example, last year when I worked with a first grade extension group, they sat down, they're like, exponents, please. But let's think about other ways that we can stretch our brains and become stronger mathematicians. And so that conversation, I think, is having to be more explicit with kids about what challenge looks like, so that when they do report home and think about some of the different tasks that they do, they're not just saying I did eighth grade math today. Um and so opening up that a little bit more so that both kids and families have a clearer idea of what challenge can look like. And sometimes that's deeper probing questions or open-ended tasks that are making you think differently or games to have strategy. Um and not just about going into the next grade levels math curriculum.
Yeah, I think that's, this wasn't my question, but I think that's really important to distinguish that when people talk about things like honors is, are you accelerating the curriculum? Um or are you going deeper into the curriculum and having a richer experience um of thinking about it? And I think that that's something that people really need to under understand and it's different in different subject areas clearly, right? I mean, if you have a kid reading at a certain level, they're going to be reading at the next level, you're going to go forward with that. But in math, you can go deeper into it and I think really kind of trying to maybe um communicate that to parents and then probe with parents what it is that they're looking for in that area. Um but that wasn't my question, but you said that and I think it's really important. I feel like it's something that I end up talking with about parents here, but then in my in my work life as well, a lot like what are you looking for from this experience? What does the challenge mean to you in this case? I have two questions. I have a question about the literacy intervention and um you know, what you're using for that tier-two intervention. Is it LLI? Is it a combination of things? Um I mean, I find personally, one of the challenges in this work is um, you know, teachers having to either create materials to do intervention, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Um, great question. So um LLI is a program that was purchased and all um interventionists have access to it. But what we have been working on as a literacy department last year and this year is really um implementing all of the science of reading research into our interventions. And we've had um extensive PD last year and this year with a group called Crafting Minds that has gone over um how to have more targeted interventions. So in the past, in the classrooms and also for interventions, a lot of the groupings of children were by their reading level. And so now there's been a shift where we're looking from the assessment, where are the students lagging skills? So we're finding that maybe a student is reading on or above grade level in terms of reading um just some connected text and answering questions, but they actually have some underlying um some underlying gaps with their foundational skills through other dyslexia screeners that we're doing. So now our interventions are more targeted. It's not just the LLI program is a little bit of everything. It's a little comprehension, a little phonics, a little writing. Um so now we're much heavier on uh phonemic awareness in the K to two groups. We're much heavier. I mean, we, I put that in the slide deck, the structured literacy routine, that's a lot of what our PD's been about, about how to have um you know, we have the phonemic awareness, it's very heavy in phonics, where we've purchased a lot of decodable texts for intervention, certainly at our school, but also we've provided um decodable texts in kindergarten and in first grade this year. So we're kind of starting um in the intervention model with these structured literacy routines. And then our PD has been around giving us the information and tools to kind of train the classroom teachers. So when they also do small group instruction during their reading block, that they're also using the those same um, you know, very research-based programs and um structures.
Yeah, that's fantastic. That was, that was the answer I was hoping you'd give.
So I will say we're not, um you know, we talk about this a lot in our department meetings. Some literacy specialists are like, are we just, you know, getting rid of all the L, like we're just shut, you know, getting rid of it and so and there's some really good texts there. So actually, our more most recent discussions have been, we don't want even some of our striving readers to only be getting decodable texts, which may not be as rich with comprehension. We still want to keep those books and give them you know, of course, they're getting access through read-alouds um in the discussion kind of whole class, but we're we're holding on to those books too so that there is a little bit of a balance and helping teachers tease out uh what the focus should be with their instruction and what types of books and how heavy to go on the phonemic awareness and the phonics and when do you let up on that a little bit? Depending on where the assessments are showing the students' needs.
Um I said one more question, I uh then I'll stop, but um I was going to ask about the data on the SEL interventions and obviously you you have some extremely positive data. I um, I mean, I I wouldn't, you know, that's very positive data. And I guess I was wondering, um you know, I mean, so many of those things, that check-in and checkout program, it seems like if that is is effective. I mean, that's, you know, a very powerful intervention. Um I think what I was going to ask before that was just how, what's the interaction between um you or another SEL coach and the teacher? Like, how much are you coaching the teacher versus working with the individual student?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I will say, you know, there's some level of flexibility there, like, you know, depending on if there's a really high need student situation, I might do a little more. But in general, I would say about eighty percent of my time is with classroom teachers or in classrooms. I think that's where I'm the most effective and what I'm doing for the classroom, you should know, being a teacher, I spend but you know, but but to to do, to to have that collaborative relationship and I can't provide meaningful coaching if I'm not in the classroom to be able to know what's really happening and I don't have that that sense, um especially with SEL when it's so big. It's not something I can go on for five minutes and then get a sense of really what the classroom teacher is doing. So I would say um it's a it's a position that's uh really point four, but it's point five, so it's halftime. But I try to make eighty percent of my time in classroom, either co-teaching lessons or um if I am working with students doing targeted work in the classroom. That's what I'm striving for.
Thank you.
Thanks, Co. Go ahead, I'm Ping and then Mayor Fuller and then Emily.
This is a very impressive uh presentation and I I I was deeply, deeply uh touched and of course visually very beautiful, but also with data. And that's a, that's a beauty. Um you know, not talking about all the concepts, all the programs, but you have data. Um I I think this could be the model for our um, you know, uh public school education, at least the elementary school level. Where, you know, all this teaching staff get together and 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 compare notes and to find out especially some students, uh I was really impressed that you referred ten students uh uh for special education evaluation and they all were found eligible. Uh that's amazing, hundred percent. Um so I'm curious because uh from my personal experience and from my community experience, sometime not all the parents were ready to accept their kids were you know, uh designated as special uh education students. And probably, you know, my experience is some uh parents are very good at advocate for their kids' needs. So you don't need to persuade them, hey, you could need their special needs. They probably already told you so. But I also heard some parents are very reluctant and I was one of them thirty years ago when my son at elementary school and he had ADHD, but he did well in math and English. I said, what's the problem? No special needs. You see, he got good grades. But I forgot behavior problems. And of course, you know, I still remember vividly when elementary school, once he was running around in a hallway, he knocked down the uh bookshelf and teacher called us and my son told me and he had a big trouble. And then principal was there and knew big trouble. Now, classroom teacher and the principal sit there, asks us to come. But anyway, um I spent a whole weekend to write three-page letter to explain situation. And even as educator myself, I was not fully convinced uh he would be a a special education student, even though school said, we schedule appointment. So you and your son will meet the psychologist and I knew that that's a starting the process for special education. So I'm curious, among those ten students, any, for example, minority students or some Asian students and for some reason, parents were not even convinced?
Last year, that group. So I want to just first clarify, that is a really good question. I want to clarify. When we look at special education referrals, they come from a few sources. I really was looking at our school and this, what comes through the SIT team at at Ainger. We sometimes also have parents who say, I want my child referred for special education. That's their right, of course. Um this is like our our result of what we need, it's like our system, our process. Um. I don't have the data about that particular group of students um in front of me. I think it was a diverse group of students as I'm thinking about. And by the time, I will say this, by the time we are talking about a child in our sit team and considering referring them to special education, there has been so much communication with their parents because they've gone through probably two, three, four cycles at least of intervention, sometimes much longer than that because we're we're providing a really, a lot of times it's comparable to special education. What we're providing through the system of intervention and what we're trying to decide is, does this child need protracted intervention, protracted instruction that's specialized? And if we're thinking, yes, it appears that the rate of progress, et cetera, is yes, then we would be considering their call to special education. Then at that point, because like whatever was saying, there's been so much communication with the parents. We're trying to make all of these plans kind of created with the student and their family. And so we usually don't run into um families that are um, you know, opposed at that point.
Okay, just a quick uh uh kind of concluding remarks. I I I really think this is very meaningful proactive. Because sometime, for whatever reason, if schools and and parents did not pay enough attention and thought the kids was being just naughty or lazy, whatever reason, did not do enough work and did not meet his or her potential. But there could be any learning disabilities, we would not, you know, uh, parents were not mindful or teachers for some reason, like my son. Uh, just finish my story. You know, at that time, we live in the one small room when I as poor graduate student. And uh my son didn't have his own bedroom and he want to invite his classmates to the our home. I said, no, no, you cannot do that. We don't have place. And then eventually he did not have chance to visit his buddies because if you did not invite your friends, then you probably will not have chance to be your friends. He was very sad. So whenever in dinner, uh, the summer vacation, he constantly asking daddy, when will school start? We just left. Most of kids don't mind. Summer is good time. Why should I worry about school? He was constantly asking when school will start, so he will meet his friends and all that. But anyway, that's my personal experience. And again, I really appreciate this kind of proactive model. And to uh, you know, uh, identify the students have some learning disabilities and we should do even more. So special education program might be a good way to help them. And uh, I hope that all the parents were pleasantly surprised. But uh, you know, as you guys said, there are no, you know, uh, kind of negative reaction, say, hey. And um, but that's good. So again, I really appreciate that. I really want to say this wonderful model and with data, we support everything. And you know, hopefully find some kind of high need students and give them early intervention and prevent the future challenges. Thanks.
Thanks, I'm Ping. Go ahead, uh, Mayor Fuller and then Emily.
So in the last hour, we've seen the best of Newton and the Newton Public Schools here with uh the fine arts folks just before you combined with the five of you um and supported by Casey and Renee and Aisha who literally have your back and Toby. Um. I kind of wish we could bottle the last hour and just send it out and make sure every resident knows the professionalism, the caring, the um the depth of experience and thought uh that is integrated into all that happens pre K through twelve. Um, just I'm here to thank you. Um. And we should bottle this up and send this out. Uh, certainly, all parent, elementary school parents should know this and the incoming kindergartner parents and the NECP parents should all um be so fulfilled by um what you're doing. So I'm just gonna say say thank you. But can I ask one question? Some of what you're doing is so amazing in part because what I'm Ping talked about, you have all this data. How the heck do you have enough time to do all the testing and the assessment along the way? I'm looking at a second grade teacher.
It's like a symphony. I I'm not using all these analogies, but it's really like this this team. Um, it's it's really, everyone has a role. And that we have a fabulous team at Ainger. Everybody, you know, it starts with our schedule, but and then everybody kind of works together collaboratively to figure out. And I do think that time that we have, we really use time well um on our Wednesday afternoons and uh we keep refining it.
Using the data, but with the kids, how do you find a way to?
I could not do my job without the intervention.
So. So they're helping you do.
Isn't a lot of that data coming from the iReady that you're giving on a regular basis? I mean, isn't some of that data at least coming from there? And and I think that that's like part of your routine as well, correct?
Yes, and then we have the intervention block at every grade level, which is like a dedicated time. But then we can work all the schedules around that block. I mean, it doesn't always work perfectly, but the structures are very important. And then in of course, the people um are the most important, our fabulous staff, but um the structures are really important to kind of allow everybody to do their jobs too.
And then some like the SCL screeners are teacher perception screeners. So the students aren't, you know, that's not that's not taking time for them. This is this is time, this is twenty minutes at a faculty meeting where teachers a couple of times a year will fill out some information.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Fuller. Go ahead, Emily.
Let me super quick. Um, first and foremost, it's lovely to see so many familiar faces. Ray, I don't think I've seen you for like seven years.
I know.
My youngest. Inclusion facilitator for my youngest at Ainger. So thank you so much, all of you. Um, I just, I want to say, um, this is, I think, a particularly important presentation. Um, which isn't to say that all our presentations are not important, however. Um, because we hear and we talk about MTSS, we see the pyramid, we talk about it in system wide goals. And I think that it is very educational for us as a body to see and understand how it's actually being used in real life with data and stories and anecdotes. And I'm sorry, wait to see the cute little kid. But um, but that's that's just what I wanted to share. So thank you and also thank you for having the opportunity to that we're learning. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Emily. Um, so a few final thoughts that I wanted to share, uh, things that jumped out at me that I wanted to highlight from your presentation. One, every child, absolutely every child gets what they need, whether that's meeting your little push to get to benchmark or your past benchmark, you need a little bit more. Every child gets what they need. Two, you are constantly monitoring and assessing data to rate and assess student performance and achievement. And that was a piece I think this sitting school committee was kind of wrangling with earlier in the year as we were developing our system wide goals. How do we get that view in? You ladies have given us a clear picture in of how you use data, how you track it, how you evaluate it and how you then use that data to inform the service delivery to your kids. I appreciate that. And then the third thing that kind of resonates with me is that Orla, you said it's a symphony. I think of it as a puzzle. Um, and each of you has a part in that puzzle. We hear so much about how the Newton Public Schools has too many employees and the student enrollment is declining. Why are we still having so many staff? It's a puzzle. And even though there might be pieces from that puzzle, I don't do puzzles because they frustrate me, I'll tell you that. Because when you finish the picture, at least you think it's finished and then you realize there's a few pieces missing. You can still see the picture. You can see what the image is, but it's incomplete. And I think you ladies have done a really effective job of highlighting and showcasing how each piece fits in with each other piece. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I think this was a wonderful, uh, very good conversation for us to have. Thank you. And you you two can have your hug moment if you'd like. All right, so uh while they are filing out, Stephen, we're going to continue on with our school committee budget resolution, which is the last item on our uh posted schedule. I'll try to pull that up on my end. Not a presentation. Um, can you pull up the, actually, no, no worries, because we have, we all, each of us have the resolution in front of us. You're good. So for this, I think what I want to do right now is just to for all of us to kind of look through the resolution and you all know me well enough by now to know I am not averse to debate. Or uh a different idea of of what should be here or isn't here. I think it's pretty unimpeachable, each and every single fact, which begins with a whereas statement. It's a fact. Um, but if anyone has a different interpretation or a different thought, we should absolutely discuss that. And so um Kathy and I felt pretty comfortable in making sure that this was a resolution that looks to talk about our statutory obligation, our statutory responsibilities as members of this school committee in securing funding for our schools. Um, it's a resolution that seeks to uh assure our residents and our voters that we would be good stewards of the public funds. And it's a resolution that seeks to highlight that we as a school committee are authorized to take this type of action. And in fact, as elected officials should have some um a stake in in this very important crucial uh uh mechanism of funding, not only our funding, the renovation or improvement of our school buildings, um Countryside Franklin and Horace Mann. Um, as well as the Pierce Boiler, I think that's important to to mention that's in there. But it's also a way for us to highlight that um the thing we want to preserve is the quality of education that our kids are going to have and that this funding uh methodology that's before voters is going to allow us to to do just that. So those are my thoughts. Kathy, if you'd like to say anything more, that's great.
Um, I I don't have anything else to add. I I think you explained our thinking very well. I perhaps I'll save any comments I have in response to my colleagues' suggestions.
Great. Any questions, comments? I see Paul and then Chris. Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, I just wonder procedurally, is is someone going to make a motion and then we're going to have a discussion on this?
Uh, well, we can certainly do that or we can take it up as a just having a conversation and then making the motion. I think we'll we'll keep going and see where this goes for a moment. I imagine that we we will uh reach a moment where we feel that we have a motion and then we'll take it from there. Any any other comments or questions right now?
Yes, I guess it doesn't matter whether it's before or after the motion is made, right?
Sure. Uh, do you have a question or a comment right now or no?
I I did, but I wanted to make it. I I just didn't know procedurally which way you wanted to go here because the motion is the motion meant, is the resolution going to be presented as written as the motion is what I'm asking.
I believe so, yes. However, that's why we're having a a discussion now. If you have a another path you'd like us to take, please let us know.
No, I got, but I I do have a statement to make, uh, which is this. Um, I can't support this resolution and I plan to abstain on the motion if and when it's made. But my position on the motion is not a statement of my position on the override proposals. And I'd like to explain. There's no question to me that we've lost the confidence of our community. I hear this all the time from thoughtful and well intentioned parents throughout the city. Our own district wide survey documents that a vast majority of parents view the district as headed in the wrong direction. And many people are voting with their feet by enrolling their children in private schools. Many parents have attempted to engage with us on matters of educational importance to their families. Whether delivered in person or on their behalf by members of this committee, those concerns have often been shunted aside. In their time of need, we have not responded appropriately to those hundreds of families. More broadly, we have failed to create a partnership with our constituency. Now, in our hour of need, documented so clearly by Superintendent Smith, we ask for their political support that not only relates to the school budget, but also to broader issues of municipal finance. Well, given our record as a committee, such a request is presumptuous. I don't question our statutory right to take the positions outlined in the in the resolution. But I do question its political wisdom when we have failed to put our own house in order. The facts and figures about the overrides have been amply presented in multiple public forums. It's time for us to let the good people of the city draw their own conclusions. And for us finally to respect their judgment rather than trying to impose ours. Accordingly, I will abstain on the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Go ahead, Chris.
So, um, you know, I I think there there's probably some, what Paul said I'd agree with, some I maybe disagree with. You know, there's, if if there's a point of discomfort I have with the resolution from a big picture perspective, it's that um that point Paul referenced regarding sort of the the broader elements of municipal finance that are part of this. You know, uh, obviously, two of these questions relate entirely to school facilities. One question relates roughly half to schools and roughly half to the city in general, including roads and and senior centers and um uh, you know, village centers and all sorts of things. And you know, it it's, it strikes me that Mayor Fuller excluded. Most of us are are probably not as deep in the in the weeds and and experts on some of those matters. I mean, I know personally there are some elements of city finance that I feel very comfortable talking about, and there are some elements of city finance that I I know almost nothing about. And you know, for us to be here and, you know, I mean, we can, we can all have our own opinions and in our private conversations, we can, we can say whatever we want and, you know. There there's a very old saying I'm sure we're all familiar with about everyone having an opinion. But, you know, as a, as a, as a member of this body and an elected official, there's sort of a a public trust element um that gives me a little pause to say, am I supposed to be here opining on the city budget? Um, and you know, look, I'm I'm very willing to guess that I'm going to be in a minority of of those of here. So um, you know, that being said, to the extent we are going to move forward and and have a vote on this, I I do think there are a couple um a couple of things that I I I need to address in the in the resolution itself. So in the first paragraph, and I I'm not trying to wordsmith things here. I have no desire to do that. And you know, I, but I think these are, these are important points. In the first paragraph, um, you know, we talk about effectively and sustainably meeting our goals. And through every PTO meeting I've done where we've talked about the budget, we've talked about still not being able to reach that point of true sustainability. The override does not do that for us, that the rate of growth of the NPS budget has exceeded the rate of growth in the city budget to a level that does not achieve sustainability. And the override will help improve that, but it will not achieve that. When we talk about uh the MSBA funding for countryside, you know, this is, this is something that has come up a lot and it's something I feel like I've 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 had to correct people on a lot. The. MSBA does not require a debt exclusion override. The MSBA requires identified funding for the city's portion of. Of a project, and that might be, you know, we have chosen that path. That was a decision that was made some time ago. And that might be sort of the practical reality, but I do think there's a a sense of. Um, misperception and and, you know. May- maybe slightly misadvertising of exactly what it is, we, you know. We could go out and theoretically find other sources of funding for that project, they might be really impractical sources of funding. And so the phrase dependent, um, I think is, is. Is slightly misleading. And then finally, in the, the uh, penultimate paragraph, we talk about. Allowing our district to meet its goals of academic, academic excellence, and. You know, I I'm, I'm curious why we don't talk about our goals of academic excellence and equity. As we do in almost all other circumstances. And, you know, i- it strikes me that, you know, this concept of, to the extent there's. You know, a group of folks out there who are, who are pushing for academic excellence. It, it, it strikes me as perhaps, you know, a, a, a bit pandering to uh, to to that group of folks. And, you know, as, as I have these conversations in, in, in private or in PTO meetings and. You know, I think the, and I, I know I've said. Things along this line before, I I don't think there really does exist. As much of a dichotomy in folks who are, you know, all excellence or all equity, I honestly don't believe that. And what I, through, through my conversations, what I've kind of come to realize is, you know, we've. Over the last couple of years, kind of. In, in our own communications, beat everyone over the head with messages of equity. And, and messages of anti-racism and, 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 and all the things that that are encompassed there. And we haven't. Communicated as much on, on that excellence piece, and I think where. The disconnect is happening with, with uh, with some of the community is that. You can't, you can't have excellence without equity, I think almost everyone believes that. So while you can't have excellence without equity, you can have equity without excellence, and I think that's the fear. That's filling the void of. You know, we, we, we continually seem to have this inkblot on what these things all mean, and we, we don't define them well. And, you know, you ask somebody what one of these terms mean, and it means. Different things to everyone, and we, we as a, as a body haven't really done a great job in defining them, I think. So. On the resolution itself, I think those are the three points. Um, that I would address, in, in just in terms of the, the wording of it, et cetera. Um, and then to the extent we move forward with um, with a motion, I I probably have some other thoughts that are, that are relevant.
Thank you, um, I'll just. Respond really quickly to the penultimate paragraph or. Therefore, um, statement, and why does it not have the word equity in there? That's a very good suggestion, I'd be happy to include it, but I have to draw your attention and everyone else's attention to the fact that. The system-wide goals are incorporated by reference in the whole resolution. Um, and our goals, as you know, very much intertwine academic excellence with equity. So it's there, though not specifically called out, you make a very excellent and fine suggestion that we insert it. In this uh, paragraph, so I think we can certainly do that.
I would suggest that.
Other, other folks also wanted to, um, I saw Emily and then Cove. Emily. Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, a couple of things, and then a suggestion, um. So, just as an FYI, um, uh, the last. Like, we've had four override votes in Newton, I can't confirm like, um, nineteen ninety. But I know that two thousand two, two thousand eight, and two thousand thirteen. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Oh, uh, that, that the school committees all voted to uh, support the override, so, so there's. Like lots of precedents around this, um, as well as, um. What's interesting is that most of those votes were taken far earlier than we're taking ours, so just as an aside, um, so, so here's my two cents. You know, I, I believe, as is, and this is my belief, I'm not putting this on anyone else, I'm just stating what my belief is. You know, I, I, I believe that. School committee members are elected, act in the best interest of students, of our, our students at Newton Public Schools. Um, and we are aware of a very large gap. Um, that we're going to be facing from a budgetary perspective. Um, and for me personally, um, I feel like if we don't vote to support this, it's almost. Like for me, like a dereliction of duty, because this is what we've been elected to do, is to support students and to. Uh, not say, you know, publicly, we support this because we know if it doesn't pass. Um, this is gonna be pretty catastrophic, what the impacts are gonna be, and so I think that's my personal statement. Um, I, I would like to make a suggestion, we don't have, uh, as Paul quite rightly pointed out, we don't have a motion yet, but, um. Uh, one of the suggestions that I personally have is that. It's all about the last two paragraphs, it really is, I mean, the resolution is really the last two paragraphs, there's a whole bunch of very important. Steps and reasoning and rationale that went on, goes, go on behind it. But from a language perspective, we're really voting whether or not we're gonna be, you know, supporting the override and. You know, I, I personally like the language about the fact that we're gonna be good financial stewards, because. The public should know that we're gonna be good financial stewards, and so if there were a motion on the table, I would. Suggest that we possibly move that to a preamble or a separate section or. To make his thoughts and Kathy's thoughts on it, or whatever we wanna call it, but the vote is really that paragraph, and I would. With the inclusion of the word equity, I think that was a really good catch, so, so thank you for that, but that's, that's my suggestion, I don't know what other people think about that. Just a thought.
Kathy, go ahead, and then Rajiv and then Anping.
So I actually think that's a very interesting suggestion, um, so as I understand it, I think what I hear you proposing is. Basically just have us vote on the last two paragraphs with the draft in front of us, so. I, I think that's an interesting suggestion, Chris, I've been thinking. Been thinking about wordsmithing and how to perhaps address some of the concerns that you had raised, um. So to the extent you're not gonna go in that direction, I'll just throw some. Amendments to the language out for you to think about and see whether that takes care of you, because I, I hear what you're saying. Um, so in the first paragraph, um, we could edit that language to read. In the, the end of the third line, so that our district can continue to make progress. Towards effectively and sustainably meeting our goals, because I recognize that you're right, the. The override is not gonna be a magic bullet that solves all our problems. But in my view, it enables us to keep going and to keep making progress. Whereas the failure of the override is gonna put us in a catastrophic hole that we're gonna be digging out of. For a very long time to come, so I, I acknowledge that it's not perfect, but I think it's important, so think about that language and then. In the MSBA paragraph, I, I hear what you're saying, I think. It comes down to me, for practicality purposes. In theory, could there be another mechanism by which we provide. Identified or dedicated funding such that we satisfy the MSBA, yes, it is theoretically possible, but I think given the. Practical circumstances that we're in, there is no reasonable alternative. So I would suggest perhaps if, if what the word, if the wording that really troubles you is, is dependent upon. We could replace that with practically depends upon. Or under the circumstances depends upon, or, or something. That indicates that that's the practical decision we have to make that's before us now. We don't, we as a body, don't get to make the sort of broader municipal finance decisions. The decisions we get to make are about the school budget and how we spend the funds that are part of the NPS budget, and so. Um, the impact of having that mass building authority funding. Is really important to, at least in my view, our long-term school development and school construction plan. So I, I would propose that as an amendment, and I do like the addition of. And equity at the end of that therefore paragraph, so those are my thoughts.
Great.
Just respond to those.
Uh, very quickly, and then on Ping, uh, actually it was Rajiv and then I think going.
Yeah, so, um. I, I actually am. More or less fine with those, those suggestions, um, and, you know, again, I don't mean to, uh, make small points of this, but if. You're asking us to vote on something, I prefer it, it, you know, it has language that reflects the reality, and, you know, I, I think what you suggested does. So I, uh, I am, uh, from a, a, a wording perspective. Um, fine with those amendments.
Go ahead, Rajiv, and then on Ping.
Thank you, oh. So, c- c- couple of quick thoughts to share, I. I fully concur with Chris in terms of not having a, a strong handle on municipal funding and how it works here. Like that, that hasn't been our purview. Um, you know, we've had discussions about funding, certainly during the last budget process, but our focus is making sure that. We, we, to the extent possible, have sufficient funding for our schools and that we're good stewards of it, I, I really like that part of it. Right, so, um. I don't know if Bill Belichick came up with this originally, but to the extent the funding is there, it is what it is. Right, and the reality for all of us is that we need the additional funding for our schools. It's still not gonna be enough. But it's going to cover a lot of the gap, and we still face, I think, the very challenging task of getting to a sustainable budget. We can't fix it today. But we need that funding, so. Um, the, the edits you suggested, Kathy, I think make a lot of sense, um. Chris, I appreciate you going through and looking at this very thoughtfully. But it, it really comes down to one thing, do we as, as a, as a school committee think? We need those funds, and I think. Anyone who's lived through the previous budget process, and some of you have lived through multiple ones. Um, the answer is yes, and if. We, we take the approach, and I've heard this from, from parents, from acquaintances and from friends. That because something wasn't done a certain way, you know, two mayoral administrations ago. You know, why are we paying the price for maintenance that didn't happen earlier, you know, why are we? Um, the one I really love is, we, we don't have enough academic excellence, so let's not put more money into the schools. Well, fantastic, it's the classic, let's, let's cut off our noses to spite our face, so. Um, I'm in favor of this, I. Again, I, I think the edits we made make a lot of sense, we can't promise. To our citizens that we're going to be fixing everything with, with an override. Uh, but we, I think, can say very comfortably that our students will be much better served with those funds than without.
Thanks, Rajiv, thank you, um, I'm Ping, I'll, I'll throw to you in just one second, I just wanted to make clear. Because there was a suggestion uh, from Emily that we focus on the last two paragraphs. But the reason, if I can bring you into my thought process here.
Can I, can I respond to that too, before we get too deep into the?
Hold, hold on, are you gonna say motion?
No, I wasn't gonna say motion, I was gonna say if there's agreement on the language that's in there, and there's more comfort with the language. Then I, then we don't have to necessarily, uh, what I didn't wanna do is to go down the rabbit hole of let's go through every single paragraph. And words with every single paragraph.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Why I made the suggestion.
Yep, I appreciate that, so the rationale behind listing all of these and what I think of them as factual points. Is part of the, um, our duty or our role in this is to provide information. Each one of these points provides information, it talks about. What is in front of voters and us, it talks about why we are here, it talks about what these funds will do. It then says what the information from our inter- interim superintendent was, that kind of. Puts on us an additional kind of impetus of having to. Act or, or have no part, take no action in something that, that has been described by our, our superintendent. As, as, well, it might not have been her word, but I certainly heard school committee members say dire. So those, that's the rationale why each one of these points is here, and I would. Um, very much urge us, sure, let's massage it and make sure the words. Uh, are, are factual and certainly meet our. Make us comfortable, but I, I think they stand, um, Anping, you wanted to say something, go ahead.
Uh, I, I. I think we can all respect for, of, of thoughtful input uh, provided by Paul and Chris. And I appreciate that, and I heard some uh, different opinions. But also, I, I very agree with uh, Rajiv's uh, input, that's a critical here, um. You know, if talking about educational excellence and without providing financial support. I mean, you are kidding anybody, in- including yourself, you know, if you want to be critical of something else, you can say it. Critical uh, city budget, okay, that's your point, but do not say, you know, because of. Um, you know, something else, and then you don't want to support this uh, override, I think that's critical. And uh, I agree with Chris that if we're talking about our goals, probably we shouldn't make consistent. Here, first paragraph, we said, uh, sustainably meet our goals, and then one, two, three, four, five. The, the fifth paragraph, the last sentence say, uh, to, uh, district ability to meet system-wide goals. Probably we should make consistent, and all three goals, probably. The academic excellence, educational equity, social, emotional well-being, so let's put all three. Very, very critical, important goals we, we said again, again, so this way. We don't need to hear other people say, you missed the one goal, or why you only included one or two or three, so let's. And another thing is, is this just my kind of two cents, uh, in terms of, uh. Is dependent upon successful passage, Cassie mentioned the practically. What's the other word, Cassie mentioned, possibly.
I don't practically.
Or under the, under the circumstances or something like that, I'm thinking about, what about that apparently? Is apparently dependent, but that, that's just my two cents, basically saying, I, I heard. Uh, Chris said that, well, that theoretically there could be in other sources, so if you say. Is dependent, you have to really, people, when questioned you, can we justify, can we defend? This is the, absolutely, if we do not pass this passage. Uh, or, or we do not pass passage, then no way we can get twenty million, you know, yeah. So, anyway, th- this is something I think minor. Um, a- and so this way, if we listed all our district. Uh, uh, system-wide goals, then we don't need to repeat the last, the last, the second paragraph saying. District, uh, to, to meet its goals, blah, 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 we don't need to repeat that, if we. You know, uh, list all these three goals in the very first paragraph, I, I think. Probably that serves the purpose of saying this again, again.
Thanks, Anping, I appreciate that, uh, we do have more than the three goals, um, that's why I think referencing. Incorporating by reference is probably the way to go, if you think of how comprehensive our system-wide goals document is. We've got operational goals in there, which this override would allow us to work towards those as well, um, so I, I. I would love to have them all called out specifically, but we have a document that. Enumerates specifically all of our goals for the Newton Public Schools. Um, but I do like the suggestion that Chris made earlier where we uh, specifically referenced the goal of educational equity. In the second to last paragraph, Mayor Fuller, you wanted to talk about the um, countryside and, and um. Funding mechanism before voters there.
I'll say a few things, and I appreciate all the comments that everyone has made. Um, along the way in the last fifteen, twenty minutes. Want to say first. To go back to where Kathy Smith. Want to say first, to go back to where Kathy Smith started this off this evening. She put up a slide that she first presented. Oh, I would, I'm gonna say maybe in October or November, which was the fundamental goal that she is trying to achieve, which is um, in this override process to make sure that our residents, our voters are well-informed so that they understand that the operating override will allow the Newton Public Schools to maintain the work that we're doing. And in the last hour, when you saw three educators talking about music and performance arts and visual arts, and then another five educators come in and talk about with our elementary students the supports that they're giving to students who might become dysregulated or students who are learning English or students who are struggling um with literacy or math. We saw. We heard, we felt, we know the excellence that is happening for all our students in our schools pre-K through twelve because of these educators. The other thing that Kathy Smith's slideshowed is that we are on a journey and this school committee and I as mayor are tasked with ensuring the financial sustainability of the school system, and we aren't there yet. Children in education have always been my first priority as mayor, they will continue to be. It's sixty-five percent of our budget, of our overall budget goes towards teaching and learning that is fitting and proper. And our growth in revenues is laid out very clearly. Somewhere prop two and a half means we grow our taxes at two and a half percent. We have some new growth, it's one, one and a half percent. I am always committed to making sure that the growth in the allocation to the Newton Public Schools matches the growth in our revenues. We have to balance the budget here in Massachusetts, every city, every town, that includes Newton. And together, I am putting together the needs of our children which are paramount with all the other services that we must provide and should provide. From policing and firefighting to a superb library, to the Health and Human Services and more. And we just got yet another triple A bond rating that says we've got the right financial strategy and we're implementing it correctly. This four point five million dollars in the operating budget. I want to particularly look at Paul and say is essential to teaching and learning in the Newton Public Schools. Periodically, cities and towns go to their voters and say, we need to relax that prop two and a half cap on revenues. We've only done it twice in Newton, twenty years ago, ten years ago, and it's our time to do it now. It is not presumptuous to go to our voters. It is essential to go to our voters, explain it clearly, have them be very well-informed. And then, as leaders, all of the schools here. Paul is right, we have to be listening really carefully to our students, to our staff and to our parents who have been shaken badly during the pandemic. We're we're still trying to figure out the right way forward, but you know what? It's been a thing of beauty to watch Kathy Smith this year in this challenging time. Help us get our feet o- on the ground and a little bit more confidence in it. And we have in the next few weeks a fabulous choice to move forward with a superintendent who will be our next leader building on what Kathy and our team has done this year. And you better believe, we better be listening to our teachers and educators and our students and our parents. And um, Paul, you're one of these leaders, and I have a lot of confidence in you in being part of this team to say, we got work to do. There is no doubt about it. Paul, I I just think of you as an important leader on this school committee. And you will make sure that we are listening carefully, being responsive to all the voices in our community. That's our job, that's certainly my job, it's the superintendent's job. It's our assistant superintendent's jobs, and it's our school committee, so we've got to be part of the solution here. Recognize that education in America and here in Newton is at a really complicated time, and we better be all in and thinking about it. I would say, I would just want to close by reminding everybody what it was like last March, April, May. When we didn't have the funding that we wanted in place to do all that we knew our teachers needed to be able to teach our children. This is our time to think hard, get ourselves educated and take this override vote very seriously. Because it will, a a no vote is a really tough situation. Um, and I think it's incumbent upon us as leaders in this school department to weigh in and s- stand up for our children.
Thank you, Mayor Fuller, um, so.
Can I just do the the the? We as a school committee decided that we must move forward with NECP and Lincoln Elliott. That has absorbed the debt capacity of the city for the foreseeable future. It is. It is the, there is no alternative. If the vote is no, other than to push back countryside Franklin Horace Ban edition. The there's, again, I have to balance a budget. We as a community have to balance a budget. Um, I will continue to look um, hard for efficiencies and different ways of putting the pieces of the puzzle together. But um, I that that's, you can take that as for a fact, that it will be pushed way back.
Thank you. So there was a method to the madness of not simply moving straight to a vote or a motion. I think because we only get these opportunities while we're sitting in these uh the school committee chamber to collaborate together, it was important for Kathy and I to make that initial stab, but for us as a body to collaborate and make a product, a resolution that we felt comfortable with, to get to consensus. So the next part, having worked this document together, and I've been keeping track of the um the edits and the suggestions that I feel we've agreed on is for us to make um uh take up a motion and consider it further. Would somebody like to make a motion? And for a, for the record, the changes that I've um codified are that the Newton Public School budget in that first paragraph can continue to make progress towards those words effectively and sustainably, meeting our goals and provide excellent academic opportunity to our students. In the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down. Um, the MSBA, uh Massachusetts State Building Authority practically depends upon successful passage of a separate ballot question on countryside elementary. Um, and then in the second to last paragraph, in including the words um, NPS, the uh a yes vote on all three ballot initiatives that will improve the fiscal stability of NPS and allow our district to meet its goals of academ- academic excellence and educational equity. Now, if there are other suggestions, I'm, I think we should consider them because we are collaborating here, and then we can vote on the product that we develop together. Any other suggestions anyone feels strongly about?
So the first paragraph, the last sentence will be meet our goals.
Meeting our goals and provide excellent academic opportunity.
So no, no change.
I I think there was the, I make progress to meeting our goals.
Correct, our district can continue to make progress towards effectively meeting our goals. It's a full sentence. Your suggestion of putting in, uh, I think you said three of the goals, social and emotional um, as well as academic excellence and educational equity. And remember, I said that um we have more than just the three goals, but they are incorporated here by reference. If you look down at the, in fact, it's a hyperlink in the in the actual document, in the uh, what is it? One, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down.
Okay, then, yeah, I I did not read that carefully, the very first paragraph, the last sentence. So here, meet our goals and, is that still and provide?
Correct.
Okay, that, I I could accept that. Meet our goals, we did not specify, but, okay, and provide excellent academic opportunities. But Chris, you recommend to add equity here or not?
Uh, that was at the um.
Not, not this.
In in the next to last paragraph.
Oh, okay, only, only there, okay, okay, I I missed third, so, okay. So um, a- and I'm sorry, uh, Tamika, the second change mean uh, the um, the funding, one, two, three, four, the first paragraph is dependent, you added.
After authority comma, you would say practically depends upon successful passage.
Oh. Okay. That that sounds pretty good, practically dependent, depends upon, okay. Okay, I got that. So last one, again, uh Tamika, would you just repeat the last change, uh, the the uh the second over to the last paragraph, therefore?
Therefore be resolved that the Newton School Committee endorses a yes on all three ballot initiatives that will improve the fiscal stability of NPS and allow our district to meet its goals of academic excellence and educational equity.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so Emily?
Oh no, I was gonna make a motion, but.
I was hoping you'd make a motion. Go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that um, um. My head hurts, oh my god. That we, that we accept the resolution with the edits that have been agreed upon by the committee.
Thank you, there's a motion by Emily to accept the mo- the resolution with the edits agreed upon by the committee, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Co, there's a motion and a second to accept the resolution as uh agreed upon with the edits as agreed upon by the committee, and I've tracked those carefully and read them out to all of you. Uh, any further discussion? Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks, so. Um, I mean, I think there there's a couple of things I I I I wanna share um in advance of of the vote, and I've expressed my concerns about, you know, the uh whether whether this is advisable or not, but there's, I guess I'll break it down into two things, there's the, there's the MPS side and there's the city side, and Paul brought some of this stuff up on the N- MPS side. You know, I've I've heard folks, um, he he referenced the HYA survey uh where, you know, seventy percent of fifteen hundred respondents have um you know, said they believe NPS is heading in the wrong direction. And, you know, I I think we we all have to accept that there there's, there's real work to be done, and I've heard people dismiss that survey, which I've been been kind of disappointed at. Um. You know, that that's, that's fifteen hundred NPS parents giving that opinion, and that's, that's a big problem. And I think we need to think about all the reasons why that is. And, you know, we we have big issues in terms of just thinking about from a pure budgetary perspective and you know, how we manage our infrastructure, and I've I've brought this up to Kathy, but i- if, when this override, uh assuming this override passes, we're gonna have a majority of our elementary students in schools that have been built in the last roughly ten, fifteen years and a minority of elementary students in schools that don't have learning spaces that are considered appropriate for today, that don't have kitchens, cafeterias, basic elements. And, you know, again, I I know I I beat on this year before, but I mean, we we talked about equity and there's massive inequity in our facilities, particularly at the elementary level. And we have to think about how we're going to address that. And I mean, these are, these are the things we have to be discussing that we have so far chosen not to. Um. You know, I I I do take, in 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 a lot of these things, I I do take a lot of um, I have a lot of optimism in in what Kathy has promised us in the profile of the graduate, which I understand will be a multi-year process, but in having this annual report as well, that's gonna provide a level of transparency that I have not seen in the six years I've been involved in MPS. You know, as far as the override itself goes and and the city side, you know, I have a huge problem with Horace Mann being part of the operating override. Both for the the folks at Horace Mann, who, let's be honest, faced an increased risk of not getting that building. And, you know, from it, just the 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 intellectual purity of it, that this is a capital project and we're putting a permanent, um, you know, a permanent levy on 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 the perpetual future of of the city. I mean, you know, we lament the use of one-time funds for ongoing operations, but we're perfectly fine with perpetual revenue for one-time capital costs. I mean, that's effectively what we're saying. And, you know, the the biggest issue I have is you know, in in the capital allocation piece, um, away from NPS. I've I've spent so much time with the NPS budget over the last year, and, you know, you've all heard me say this. Personnel expenses have gone from eighty-three percent to almost eighty-nine percent of our budget, there's, there's really nothing to cut. Except staff. Um, and staff is what directly impacts our student experience. So, you know, i- it's, our our personnel have crowded out all their parts of our of our budget. NPS is growing at a faster rate than the city budget, we have to make that be sustainable. And when I look at the city budget, there is one glaring line item of us funding our pension at nine point six percent growth a year while the city's growing at three and a half percent a year. That is currently, that funding represents eight point eight percent of the city budget. In two thousand twenty-nine, that's gonna represent thirteen point two percent of the city budget. That will be a four point four percent effective crowding out of the city budget. I don't think that's sustainable, I don't think there's any way that's going to happen. And I think we need to be honest and. And I think we need to be honest and accept the reality of that. If we were to grow the rate of our pension funding. At equal to the rate of the city growth, that would free up ninety point six million dollars of free cash flow for current city services. From now through the year twenty-nine. The operating override will bring in fifty-eight point six million dollars, almost one and a half times as much money. And I understand that's not something that can happen overnight. But these are the hard questions. This is, this is where the pushback is coming from, from folks and, and I understand it. I, you know, there is, these are things that I'm not happy about. But to Rajiv's point. This override ballot isn't about. Whether or not, it, it's not on, it's not on the ballot, whether or not, how we're going to fund our, our pension. That's not the question being asked of us and the question being asked of us is simply. Do you want roughly four and a half million dollars for the schools and do you want four and a half million dollars for the city? And that's why at the end of the day. There, there's, there's no getting around. No student is going to be in a better position by not having that four and a half million dollars. So. I, I just want to be fair layout, you know, what I see as real issues with how we're proceeding with this. But I do recognize at the end of the day, this is in the best interest of students.
Thank you, Chris. So I, I, I think the operative part is what, I'm just going to focus on the last part of what you said. Uh, the best interest of our students. It's not for us to question. Whether there are alternative funding mechanisms out there. That's not the issue before voters. It's not the issue before us. I know Mayor Fuller is going to want to speak to that in a minute. But I did want to kind of run down a few things, uh, that you were saying. One, I haven't heard anyone dismissing the HYA survey data. I've heard people cautioning that that data is a reflective of a tiny fraction of our parent population. When you mentioned fifteen hundred respondents. If we take each child in the Newton Public School and we attach two people who, uh, whatever their relationship care and love that child. It's a heck of a lot more than fifteen hundred. And those people we didn't hear from. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that we have an incomplete. Picture of the people who are, uh, evaluating our current. Kind of current satisfaction level with the schools. We don't know who those folks are. We don't know, uh, any demographic information there too. We have a very narrow view on this number and that's not dismissing, that's simply putting greater context around the number. So I agree with you. Ultimately, I think we all do that there is work to be done for sure. All of our parents probably have suggestions and ways that we would like to see the Newton Public Schools improve. And continue to provide excellent academic services to our students. I don't think that's something that any one group of our parents can claim. I certainly hope that they wouldn't be so bold as to try. Twenty-three school buildings. That's the other thing I wrote down. With a, a significant pause on any type of efforts to renovate or replace or remodel up until two thousand ten. We are way behind where we need to be and that's not a position that was. Put in place by any of the sitting elected officials around this table. None of us. But yet it's something that we've all inherited and we certainly have an obligation to remet remedy going forward. And that's what this override is helping us do. So that's the final point that I wrote down. How to address the inequities in our buildings. Well, things like overrides. They help us. They build new. They build better. They replace aging equipment that's obsolete and costing us money. As well as the uncertainty of when is it going to fail for the folks over at Pierce? We're proactively looking to replace that boiler so that it doesn't impact the kids in the middle of the school year. And that they'll have to be out or the parents will have to find babysitters or. I don't know. This is a proactive measure of replacing and repairing and I think it's important for us to take a stance and that's enough. Mayor Fuller, you wanted to say something.
A couple of things and Chris, I think you brought up a couple of issues that are certainly on your mind, but I think are on others. So, um. Uh, one is so. In the mix of this override, we have some school building projects as debt exclusions and. Horace Mann is part of the operating override. Why the heck did we do it that way? And it should also, all building projects be at debt exclusion projects? I'll go back to two thousand thirteen and remind folks, um, what the voters of Newton passed in two thousand thirteen. It was the same thing. We had two debt exclusion. Questions, New Anger, New Cabot. And then there was an operating override that included a brand new service. As well as a brand new fire headquarters, as well as some other. Uh, there were teachers for, and police officers and some other things. So why do you ever put school building projects into an operating override? It's because what you actually said just a few minutes before that, which is. The city has been underfunding its buildings for decades. So we need, um, permanent increase in funding available because once we're done with. Um, Horace Mann, remember you were saying how we had all those other elementary schools still in front of us? You betcha. So, um, this as a school committee, we're together figuring out the long range. Facility plan and we're prioritizing and we as a community have to fund it. So that's why you put, um, why Ceddie Warren did it and why I did it and it's, um. Something cities and towns do. You put into your operating. Um, overrides, permanent increases so that you can, we can as a community fund our buildings. You also mentioned something about pensions. So I'll also just say. Just like the, the city of Newton for decades barely invested in school buildings. We didn't invest, we made promises as school committees, as mayors, as city counselors. To our employees that when they retired, they'd have a pension and they'd have healthcare. And guess what? For decades, no money was put into the system. We also underfunded our roads. We have also underfunded our athletic fields, our parks, our playgrounds. And it's our turn. Um, I knew I was signing up for this when I ran for mayor. I didn't know I was signing up for a pandemic, I'll tell you, but I knew that this would be hard because it's our time. To fund our pensions and by the way, that's not a decision I make. There's an independent retirement board that sets the amount. I try to work very closely with them and I will certainly look at whether we can somehow fulfill our obligations to pensions. In a timely manner. I would encourage everybody to go look at the Moody's Rating Report. It said the challenge facing the city of Newton is funding our pensions and then retiree healthcare, otherwise known as OPEB. Um, we're up to this. We've got a strategy. We actually can do it. We will do it. Um, and, um, the financial strategy makes sense. And yep, it does mean an override in two thousand twenty-three. Um, but we, we absolutely can do this. We will do this with the help of our residents.
So, thank you, Mayor Fuller. We have collaborated together. We have a motion and a second in front of us on the resolution. I think it's time. And we've had an extensive discussion on the backend as well. Let's not forget about that. I think it's time for us to take up the vote on the resolution. Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three.
Yes.
Ward four. Yes. Ward five.
Yes.
Ward six.
Abstain.
Ward seven.
Yes.
W- uh, ward eight.
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller.
Yes.
So that resolution passes by a vote of eight to, um.
Zero.
Eight to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Um, all right. I will make sure we email a copy of the. What we just voted on to everybody. Um, Lisa Mazola will take care of that in the morning. All right. Our last item is a interim superintendent preview. Kathy, if you're still. And, uh, to any of our staff, thank you so much for hanging in there. You're really.
Yes, thank you. They've been working very hard. Um, the, uh, very quickly, um, we're going to be talking about the college application process. There have been changes. So our team will be coming and I'm going to remind everybody it's March first. It's a Wednesday. A little bit different schedule and they're going to be bringing data. About how our students are doing with the, uh, applications and admissions to college. So if there are any things that you want us to include. Uh, please get them to me as soon as possible.
Just so I'm understanding, so the guidance presentation is not about. General, it's specific about the college guidance process as opposed to high school guidance in general.
I think there's going to be a presentation about high school guidance, but I know that the focus was going to be, like I said, a.
Great.
Change in the application process.
I, I'd love to know more about, um, caseload numbers. Toby left. Case, caseload numbers. That means I can ask my question. Um, caseload numbers and, you know, incidents and number of. Ambulance calls. Like I'm curious to know about that side of guidance as.
Emily, I didn't hear you.
Uh, ambulance calls. Um, um, it'd be interested in, in sort of the social, emotional wellbeing side as well as the college application side. If we can.
Are you talking about the stress on, uh, applications? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, nothing to do with college. Everything to do with the, what the other hat of guidance counselors does.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
In terms of supporting, supporting our students. Emotional, and with social, emotional perspective. Any other. Directions for Kathy for that next. Presentation now? Okay, great. Oh, go ahead.
Quick, very quick. We made, I believe we made a change in the number of guidance counselors in our last budget, just how. The, the extent to which that change has caused like reallocation of roles or assignments or. And how the actual increase in the number of students at North has plays into that.
Okay, with that, we've concluded the posted business for tonight's meeting. This week we'll be refining and pushing out information on the finalist visits to Newton. Including specifics about their schedules and how members of our community can participate and provide feedback to the candidates, on the candidates, that is. Again, the finalist visits and interviews will occur, will occur the week of February thirteenth. With deliberations scheduled to occur February seventeenth, just prior to February break. After that, our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be on Wednesday, March first. And thank you to our central staff and big thanks to anyone who attended and stuck in there tonight. We appreciate it. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.